It's nine fifteen. Um, just as a reminder to people in the room, before you speak, please hit the little red unmute button. Make sure your mic is green or else people online cannot hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Uh, welcome to the March twenty first, uh, first ever nine fifteen meeting. Um, and before we begin, uh, Mark is going to read the preamble.
In compliance with the notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law in section one oh one point oh two one of the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy six, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city planning department conducts its meetings in a manner modeled after Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Recusals from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that online participants use the raise your hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise your hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version, and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be hurt and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking the raise your hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be using utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. Our meeting activity is being recorded via WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being live streamed via YouTube. Our request to speak on a particular matter submitted through the proper channels have been considered. We've also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Upper channels for comments are listed below. Communications with members of this body must follow proper channels for consideration. Any comments received by Wednesday twelve noon deadline are collected by city planning staff and disseminated to the commission members prior to any scheduled meeting. Proper channels for public comment, sending an email to the city planner, city planning at ClevelandOhio dot love address with a comment or a letter, calling and or leaving a message at two one six 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 four two two one zero, sending a letter or dropping our comments at City Hall six oh one Lakeside Avenue, suite five oh one, Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one four. The meeting rules and procedures. The chair will call each agenda item and then applicant will be invited to proceed through their presentation. Each presentation should be completed prior to questions and comments from the commission in order to facilitate a smooth presentation. Once the presentation has concluded, the chair will ask planning staff to summarize design review advisory recommendations if applicable and any public comments received. Public comments received through the proper channels by the deadline are distributed distributed to commission members prior to the meeting. Staff will also identify any members of the public present and scheduled to speak. Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the chair and any individual providing public comment is permitted two minutes to speak to the agenda item in which they have an interest. The chair will then request recommendations from staff if applicable. The commission will then begin deliberations and and project review. Any commission member except the chair may make a motion at any point after the agenda item has been called.
Thank you. Um, so first order of business is to call the roll and would like to mention that Councilman Harsh, who's online is representing, um, uh, Councilman's life seat. So as we call the roll, um, we'll note that.
Anthony?
Present.
Blucher?
Present.
Curry?
Present.
McCray Scott?
Present.
Sergeant is not present and Harsh.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Um, first order of business is to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, the March seventh meeting, uh, which we have here before us. Um, we have a motion about the March seventh minutes.
Make motion.
Got it. Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Blucher?
Abstain.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Uh, Harsh?
Yes.
Um, I wonder if, Councilman, you might have to abstain just because you weren't here, if that's okay?
I abstain.
There you go. But, uh, but maybe you were listening online.
You never know.
All right. Thank you. Um, all right. Motion carries for the minutes. Um, first item on the agenda is the lot split consolidation, uh, one three five six East eighty eighth Street. Um, and there are two parcel numbers, oh seven oh and two oh five. Um, is Jack here from City Architecture, I believe?
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from the next thirty items.
Okay. Don't go far. We'll call you back once we get.
They'll be presented all as one.
Okay, so, um, for the commission mem-
Yes, I am here.
Okay, thanks, Jack. So just for the commission members, um, there are three lots, but, um, are they related to the same project in the same vicinity?
Uh, yes, all part of the same project.
Okay, so why don't you present the whole thing and then we're going to go back and do three separate motions for the first three items and I'll, I'll read those as we get there because we have one on Griffin Avenue and one on Forest. But, um, but take us through all three and and then we'll come back to the procedures.
Okay, all right. That sounds great. Um, good morning. My name is Jack McMichael. I'm a city architecture. Um, and I'm happy to be presenting this morning. Um, this is, we are working with CHN Housing Partners. Um, a fifty-five unit, uh, scattered site, single family home development across, uh, the neighborhoods of Huff, Glenville and Buckeye Shaker. Um, these homes will be, uh, infill vacant lots and will provide an affordable housing opportunity through, uh, CHN's successful lease purchase program. And a lot of these first few slides, you can kind of see the overview if you flip through. And we'll be dealing with, uh, three of the sites which, um, of the fifty-five. Um, you can see these are some of the options we have, um, relative to fitting with the lot sizes and the floor plans associated with them. And we do offer the accessible on a lot of the corner lots. There's six of the fifty-five. And then this is the first, uh, case of it. Uh, you wanted me to run through each now?
Yeah.
Correct. Okay. Um, this is the first site. Uh, it, it was just parceled out. If you go to the, um, site plan, yeah, the existing, there is a couple smaller, um, parcels and we're just consolidating to to make a developable site. Um, it, the size of it is just below that forty-eight hundred square feet, but, um, it follows about the same size as a lot of the other lots in the neighborhood.
Okay, we got it. Uh, and that was eighty-eight street just for the commission. That was the one on eighty-eight. Yep.
Yeah, you can see.
Okay, you can go to the next one.
Okay, and then the next two, um, are pretty similar. Um, these sites, they're being replotted just because they have the accessible home on the corner and, uh, we're plotting to give more space for that. You can see that here. Um, and the, so we're developing both of these parcels after they're plotted. One's going to be the accessible on the corner and then the other is, um, uh, one of our single family typical lots and it's a little bit smaller than the forty feet. It's only about thirty-seven, I believe, but we're also doing this because it gives more space for that corner lot. Accessible.
And this one's in Griffin? Yep.
Yep. Yep. And then this one, it's, it's about the same thing. Um, this one's in Buckeye Shaker on Forest Avenue. Um, kind of doing the same thing. Uh, I believe the, yeah, the, the one of the two story is less than that forty-eight hundred and I think a little bit less than that forty foot frontage, but I'm trying to give as much space for grading on that corner lot.
Okay. Uh, thank you. So commission members, um, any questions about any of them before we'll take them one at a time. Um, but any questions or comments for Jack?
Um, I would say, um, I like the, I, 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 I like the, um, thought around using a corner lot and making sure that you can build an accessible housing. I think it's smart and, um, and so kind of very appropriate to think about the replating for that. Um, so my opinion.
Yeah, we try and it's best with the grading and, um, getting an attached, having that attached garage be accessible as possible in the back.
Yep. Um, okay, so the first one we'll need a motion is on page three of anyone, which is-
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the lot split consolidation at thirteen fifty-six East eighty-eighth Street.
Second.
Oh, we have a motion in a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Um, motion carries, uh, page four, number two.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the lot split consolidation at one two five oh seven Griffin Avenue.
Second. Oh, we have a motion in a second.
Anthony?
Roll. They are good. Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, page five.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the lot split consolidation of one two seven, one ten. I'm sorry, one two seven one zero Forest Avenue.
Second. Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Thank you very much and, uh, good luck with the project. Nice project.
Thank you.
So the next item is actually a zoning matter, so it's a public hearing for those of you online or in the audience. Uh, for any zoning, uh, matters, uh, we do hold a public hearing, which means that we'll take public comment for those matters. And so for the conditional use, um, I'll just read how we'll go first. Staff will make a present. Looks like Xavier Bay is going to do that. Um, and then the sponsor, so anybody who is supporting or could be the councilperson or the project sponsor will go next. Then I will open it up to the public for public comment. We'll first take proponents, those in favor of the zoning change, and then anyone with questions or those who might oppose the zoning change. Um, we'll ask that you please state your name clearly and if you're here in person, fill in the sign in sheet and give us your address. Um, and you must keep your comments to three minutes or less. Uh, so the first item is a large state residential facility, six occupants. The address is three one two two West Boulevard. Uh, and, uh, Xavier, you're going first and the project sponsor, Anthony Williams, is here. Yes.
Correct. Yep.
And if you are here, you can come up if you, um, and go ahead and come up to the table. And when you speak, you'll just press the green button, but you can come up and have a seat. Um, okay, go ahead, Xavier.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and, uh, members of the commission. Um, as I stated, my name is Xavier Bay. I'm in the zoning section of city planning. Um, should I wait for a fluke here?
He's pretty quick.
Okay. All right. So, um, this property is located within a two-family zoning district and is within a thousand feet of three other currently existing state licensed residential facilities. And so that's why you're seeing this here today because whenever an applicant is proposing, um, over five occupants for these facilities or if they're located in a multi-family residential zoning district, they require a conditional use approval from this body. And so, uh, here you can see a map of, uh, Ward eleven and the currently existing residential facilities. You can see this area is somewhat oversaturated, um, as there's already three about seven hundred feet away to the north. Um, on the left, you, you see a picture of the property in question. It's just, uh, you know, an average residential, uh, you know, structure on the West Boulevard, uh, in the Cadell neighborhood. And so here you can see it's just north of the intersection of Lorraine and, uh, West Boulevard, just south of I ninety. And then, uh, on the map here, you're, you're basically seeing and highlighted and that cyan color is the property in question and the hatched, uh, overlay there is a thousand foot buffer, um, from other existing residential facilities. And then to the north, northwest, you see those house icons that look like white circles. Those are the existing residential facilities.
Sorry to interrupt you before you go on.
Yep.
Explain that to me again. I just don't fully understand the map.
Yeah.
So the red line is, is, the blue is the site, right?
Correct. The blue highlight is the site in question and the hatched or like, uh, the line, uh, that those the hatched overlay with the red line being the end of the buffer, um, the hatched overlay is everything within a thousand feet of an existing residential facility.
So does that mean in, there is something within a thousand feet or there isn't?
Correct. Yeah, this property is within a thousand feet of three existing facilities.
Those are the three red ones?
Uh, the three white circles to the upper left, just right of the legend are the existing facilities.
Oh, I got it. Or there's four.
And basically the red line is the, the end of the thousand foot buffer.
Got it. Okay. Sorry. I, I just really wanted to understand it. Now I understand. So.
Good.
Um, the, the rest of this map is actually just the land use map.
Correct. Yeah, you just see the zoning overlays, uh, the, the yellowish, uh, brownish overlays are the residential districts two family.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And so the next slide here just shows you the criteria that this body should be looking at when they are considering conditional use. Uh, you're considering, your considerations are based on if this property is actually within a thousand feet of another facility, which it is. Um, you're also looking at the architectural design, layout of the home, things of that nature. Um, and this home, you can see it is just an, it looks and appears to be an average residential structure. They're not proposing any signage at this time. Here you can see just some of the context of the street going up and down West Boulevard. Um, they do have those larger colonial type homes, um, on the street, so they're a mix of two-family, single-family residences. That's about all I have to present for you. I do have some snippets of the applicant's presentation in here, just so you could see their site plan. Uh, they have a garage in the rear. They're, they're just, they're right next to the off-ramp of ninety. You can see the houses, just the layout on the, um, uh, you know, siding of the home is, is, is average to a residential neighborhood. Here you can see the floor plans. It is, uh, kind of difficult to see from this, uh, distance of the screen, but the applicant can go into more detail about the, you know, the amount of rooms and they do have images of the interior and their presentation as well. So I'll just hand it over to the applicant, Mr. Williams.
Okay. And then could you, um, press the, pull that up, press the green button?
Madam Chair, before we have, from the applicant, I have a quick question for Xavier.
Yeah.
Um, going back to the second slide where you're showing the saturation, um, in that particular area, is there anything in the code that, I guess, indicates what is oversaturation? Um, or is there, I guess, like, when the city is making a decision on approval, is there any sort of benchmark to determine there are too many for the particular area?
Uh, good question. Not at this time. Um, just, you know, you, basically the code just states if you're within a thousand feet of another existing facility, you acquire a variance and that's mainly to prevent oversaturation of neighborhoods, um, uh, with these facilities. Because really you want the occupants of these facilities to feel- uh, with these facilities, because really you want the occupants of these facilities to feel like they're just an average neighborhood. And when there's a lot of these, you know, in close proximity to each other, you lose a lot of that residential kind of feel of the neighborhood.
Madam Chair, Xavier, um, is one thousand feet as a crow flies?
Uh, it, correct. It would be a thousand feet from parcel line to parcel line and a straight line.
So as a crow flies.
Correct.
I'm sorry if you don't understand the term.
Thank you for the clarification.
I'm dating myself. It's, it's a straight line. It's not as, as one would drive or walk.
Correct.
Because naturally it would be within a thousand feet.
Correct. Parcel line to parcel line, they're about seven hundred eighty feet away.
You learned this.
Thanks.
All right. You can turn yours on and go ahead and present. Uh, welcome, Anthony.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm a little short.
You can pull it.
I did. Sorry. I just wanted to recap. This is my last slide. I just want to mention, uh, they have been scheduled for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, they've been postponed so they could be heard by this body. So we're hoping to get a decision made today so that they can move forward with their Board of Zoning Appeals process, which is, uh, two Mondays from today. Um, they require the variance for being within a thousand feet of another facility and having over five occupants.
Good morning. Now you can go ahead. Sorry. I promise. You're good.
No need to apologize. So I did make a couple pamphlets. Last time was four nights. I'm sorry. All right. So I'm not going to read everything word for word, but there is some things that I would like to read, um, to get more of a clear and a precise understanding. Uh, good morning again, everyone. My name is Anthony Williams. I have the resident home at thirty one twenty two West Boulevard Street. And I'd like to start off with the mission statement. It reads Transformation Home and Care is an organization dedicated to transitioning one life, one moment on the next through love, care, compassion, teamwork, services and growth. We will help the community and embrace a positive unbroken chain of reaction based on professional, professional support we provide to our residents. Our, with our team will not enforce a blindfold when it comes to meeting individual needs for Transformation Home and Care residents. And I'm going to read the executive summary as well. Transformation, Transformation Home and Care provides, um, comprehensive assisted living services for males with various disabilities in Cleveland, Ohio. Our facilities offer to twenty-four care in, care, uh, for, care in a comfortable home environment designed to support both physical needs and quality of life. We are distinguishing ourselves through personal care plans that emphasize residence autonomy and development. Approach combines essential direct and daily support service with opportunities for personal growth, education, community engagement and community engagement. Each resident will receive individualized attention from our professional staff who are trained to provide medication management, meal preparation, transportation and development support. Our business model is focused on creating sustainable, high-quality care while meeting or exceeding industrial standards. We aim to establish Transformation Home and Care as a provided, as a trusted provider in Cleveland area assisted living market segment. Now, this portion is, as far as the facility description, um, the property features a spectacular bedroom, comfortable sleeping arrangement, including an adjustment bed, two generous living spaces, dining room, three and a half, um, bedroom, I'm sorry, three and a half bathrooms, a full basement for additional, uh, storage and attic, kitchen, fire car garage for vehicle transportation. And the services that we will provide are here, which will be twenty-four seven, uh, professional supervision and assistance. We will provide three meals and plus daily snacks, medication management administration, resident upkeeping and personal care assistance as needed. Activities and engagement. We have indoor activities including board games, Jenga, and, um, I'm sorry, you have board games, cards and Jenga, outdoor activities such as cornhole and fishing, organized trips to community attractions, science centers and aquariums and such, uh, and social engagements. For transportation, we provide, we provide our medical staff for, uh, their medical appointments, uh, activities and events in, uh, in personal errands and outgoings. Our development program include cooking courses, uh, computer skills and training, job placement and volunteering programs. Now here's our target marketing. We want to target it right here. It's transification, Transformation Home and Care males, A's, forty to sixty-fives require assisted living arrangements. We will also set residents that have disabilities, disability does not, that does not mean, um, uh, dis- disqualified, um, or not qualified. And in fact, my younger brother, he is disabled. He's legally blind. We go shoot pool often and he does win. Um, the goal is to be a reliable partner to each resident providing excellent quality of life through sustainability, consistency and a higher caliber, caliber care service that promotes dignity and personal growth. All right. In our organization and management, organization structure, uh, I will cover this as well. And it's going to be directly from our staff members, which will be the direct care professionals and the resident program workers. And their responsibilities are they will do the medication management and these, uh, these employees will come from Indeed and, um, LinkedIn and Zip. So they would, they would take care of the med, the, uh, medication management. They would provide transportation as far as to their activities in any other locations. They would do meal prep and preparation. They would make sure the residence is, the resident is up keeping. Supervision and safety and we do have an ADT alarm system that is provided to help for the safety of the residents. They will for surely communicate with the residents, the families, visitors and other staff members. They will provide monitor, um, monitoring and reporting residents' behavior and concerns or changes in any condition. They will assist with skill development and activity planning as well. Now the residence manager, his or her responsibility will be supervising the resident, residents in the manage, in the, in the staff, uh, care planning, development and implementing individual care for residents. They will make sure we aren't complaining and complains. Meaning we are complaints with the state regulation, clinical teams, social workers, caseworkers for our residents and et cetera. Um, they will communicate with the healthcare providers, show social workers, care workers and, um, external parties such as partners like Tri-C. Uh, their, their other responsibility will be for budgeting and finances and finance, financial management. They will help with, uh, staff training such as fire drills. Ensuring they will ensure we have a clean and safe environment, walking environment with, as far as the outside and the inside of our environment as well. They will help with problem solving, resolving conflicts and, and address any concerns for the residents or visitors or their family. And they also will help with record keeping, maintain an accurate record and documentation. So that's that part of that portion as far as my mission statement and my business plan. If you, I'm going to go to the next page. I'm sorry. And this is the key point of the program here.
Before you, before you go on, we, just very simple question. How, will someone be living at the site full time managing the property?
Yeah. So it'd be twenty-four seven. I mean, they won't live there, but they will be changing shift change pretty much.
But there will be somebody there twenty-four seven?
Yep.
Okay. Um, you're.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I really appreciate your reading this. Um, however, I mean, that's not our charge to determine whether or not we meet the licensing requirement. Um, we're here, you're here for a zoning variance. So if you could sort of focus on that potentially. And the other question or a question I do have, are you, are you the owner?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I, I wouldn't gather that because I could have read this. I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to disrespect you. But, um, you know, we need to know why you want to do this and why it's important and, and to the community.
Okay. So let's do that. Uh, go finish your presentation, just really, and then we're going to open up to the public. Then we'll ask additional questions. So go ahead and finish your presentation about the project specifically itself.
Okay. All right. So this, this part of the presentation is key. Um, this is called the plan, the, the present journey in the future, PLJ plan. So the, this process is built for, it is built in three tiers, which is initiation assessment, development, pathway, sustainable achievement. And at the initial assessment, we want to evaluate our res- residence current state exactly.
Sorry, just as, as I said, we, we, we're not here to evaluate how you're going to, basically that. We're here to talk about the, your, you've acquired the house, your, um, you, this, the specifics of the zoning project, not necessarily every detail of how you'll manage the, the program itself. So Xavier, you want to say something?
Uh, uh, yeah, I'll just specify, you know, the conditional use, uh, that, that this body is, is approving is basically, you know, the location of your facility, uh, being within a thousand feet, uh, or I'm sorry, being within a, a two-family residential zoning district and you're proposing six occupants. And so it's really because of the, uh, the size of the facility is why you're actually seeing this. Um, and so you, the determinations are based on, you know, the residential character of the neighborhood, making sure that this facility, uh, kind of blends in well, uh, more for lack of a better term with, with the neighborhood.
So for example, maybe talk about you own the property, how long you've owned it, how much actually work does it need? Those sorts of things that you currently own it, things like that.
Okay. So I bought the property last, not last October, but, uh, October before last. Um, it sits exactly on a corner and it's a house to the right and to the left is a field. Uh, no work needs to be done in the house. It's already pretty much furnished. The dining room table is there, the, um, the stove and refrigerator is there. All the, everything is in the house ready and up to go. All I need to get is you guys to, if, if it's your will to let me move forward with my program. Um, as far as any safety concerns or things of that nature, I can say I do have an ADT camera that's already set up on the back of the garage and in front of the house, the cameras are there. So I'm able to see everything that happens inside, outside of the house. Every time the, uh, the doors open up, the alarm will sound off. So it's not to the fact of the matter that you would see any residents straddling it off or any things of that nature. All the doors are efficiently locked. Like I say, everything there, we don't need any work. No work is need to be done. Um, only thing that I believe that I may have to do is build a fence on the side and that will block off the other side of the house. Like I said, it's a field on the left side that's, that's gated off. So no one's over there. So we're kind of like in a silo by ourselves where I can't see or picture the residents going off to any other home or things of that nature. I want highly functioning residents to be in the home. I don't want the residents that you made, you know, nothing against that you see holding signs at the corners of the streets and things of that nature, the highways and byways. I don't want those residents. I want the residents that need the help that I'm offering to give each and one that comes into their home. That's why this program is so important to me, because when they come in the home, we want to do the floor ground assessment. We want to see where they at. We want to see where they want to go. I don't want to enforce anything to make someone accept something that they don't want to accept. The program is fully for the, for the residents. It's, it's not for what I want for the residents and what, what, what they want for myself, for themselves. That's why I want to make sure I select each and every resident, particularly when I talk to them. Um, so when they do enter the facility, like I said, it's going to be twenty-four seven. So somebody else always going to be there. The things that we're going to offer to the residents is going to be great for them to, to advance in life. I don't want anyone, I don't want to, this program is not meant to cripple anyone. It's to make you get back into the community and, and thrive. That's the whole goal of this. You know, this is, this is the path into the dream. It's, it's for what I want to do and what I want to offer. But again, it's for the residents to get them back functioning live.
Okay. Well, how about this? Let me open the, finish the public portion, then we'll ask a lot of questions. So first, um, just since the public hearing, is there anybody here who is speaking in favor of the zoning change? And can I ask, uh, as a councilman, uh, or is this councilwoman or councilman? What, what is this?
Yep. Uh, Councilman Kelly is present and is representative.
There you are. Would, uh, so, um, so would you like to speak? Yep.
Can I speak?
No, you, we can't hear you unless you come up here. So. And hit the button. Welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Two councilmen today.
Good morning. Um, uh, morning brother, how's up there? Um, we, we had a meeting with, with Anthony in, in this house with the residents, um, and, uh, I've spoken to the residents after that. My aide has spoken to all of them, um, when I wasn't able to go in house, house and talking. The, what you said, the contour of the neighborhood is, is their concern. Uh, they don't feel that a for-profit, uh, entity there with so many being close. You have three within a thousand feet and I'm of age, I know as a crow flies, I, I know how that works. But you also have across the street from St. Ignatius, um, terrace, you have an Adams Board facility there. I used to be on Adams Board, a great board. I had to step down when we became councilman, unfortunately. And then you have UCC Church on Ninety-Ninth and Madison. Both of those are within, within that facility too. So there's actually five places within that area. Um, but just on this strip of West Boulevard, you have an ODOT uh, piece of land, which is grassy and whatnot. Then you have the highway, you have that ninety highway where you're coming off. And I was, uh, lucky enough to finally get some barricades in there in a triangle, because that's the place where they used to go into the houses and whatnot. You do have people there standing around and, and soliciting, uh, whatnot. We, we met with Anthony at the house with the neighbors. A lot of their concerns was, does he have the wherewithal to do it? It's just a startup. It's, it's new. He, his heart's in the right place, but they don't feel that this is the right place in contour of the neighborhood. They're worried about the highway being right next there with that proximity. Uh, the lady next door does have children. Uh, he had said he will put a fence up. That was a concern. Knowing that you're going to have locks and bells going off, less than making anybody feel any safer that, uh, that this is what they're going to have. They just don't feel it's the right spot. We, we met at his house, um, some people were, were kind of okay with this somewhere. Most of the people I've talked into after they had another meeting by themselves with my aide felt that, uh, they would not like to see this here. They wish him the best of luck somewhere else, but they don't think it's right in the neighborhood. Those are all big houses, single families, maybe one or two or two families, and they just, uh, think there are too many of them right within vicinity to put one in this area on West Boulevard with houses. Uh, but he was very, very generous with everybody and whatnot. Just the majority of my residents. I've, no one's called me that said they want it. You know, I've got some letters here of people. We were here twice. The residents came down twice. They weren't going to come down again. They're like, well, we, we've done it. Can we just send some letters? So that's what, uh, we put. So I work for my residents. They're not in favor of this, so I, I can't be in favor of it.
Um, thank you. Um, do you want to submit those to the, yeah, we can pass them. Yeah. Thank you. Um, is, is there anybody else here who is either online or here who's going to speak to this matter? Um, either for or against it or has questions? Uh, just raise your hand if you're online, if you're here. Um, I don't think there's anybody here to speak. So I'm going to close, I'm going to close the public portion. Actually, they might not have heard me. Is there anyone online that would like to speak to this matter? Um, all right. We'll close the public portion. Uh, question members, any questions, additional questions for the applicant, the staff or the councilman?
Did not add something if possible. So like, like the councilman said, we did have the meeting down at the resident, um, some people went for some word against exactly what you said, but I remember one guy specifically, uh, he, he, he did have some graded, you know, he did have some concerns, but his concern more seemed like he was focused on his business. Uh, he was showing me the, the pictures of some of the, some of the residents. I don't know. It was further up the street Lorraine from my, from my home where I had. And he was showing me the pictures where some guys, a guy that was asleep on his business step. That's the only concern that he had. From my perspective, that's all he was giving me. Um, some of the other ladies, they, they did have some concerns. Like he said, the, the lady next door said they have kids. So a fence can be put up to alleviate that. I saw those kids before. They're very nice. And I spoke to the lady bef- before that lives next door. That's no problem putting up the fence to ensure that the kids won't be hurt or putting any harms danger. But, um, like I said before, it's when that door opened, that alarm goes off. You said back door, you're going to hear it. And it's going to. And it's going to be twenty-four seven operation, it's like someone's going to be sneaking out, and if not, I'm not going to have the kind of residents that you see on the highways and byways that just, I'm not looking for that at all. I'm looking for some residents that need that extra push to get them back in that community, so I can have this good program for them, and as much as the, uh, residents need it, I need it for myself too, because it's a good thing that I want to offer. So, and, um, I do have a few books that you all can look over, I'll leave with you for the programs as far, as far as the rules and the regulations and things of that nature. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, alright, commission members, questions, comments, councilman Harsh, anyone?
Madam Chair, I do have a question for Xavier. The, the, you said there are three other residential care facilities? And what, what type of facilities are there? Are there males, female, kids?
Uh, that's correct, um, Mr. Fluker through the chair, there is, uh, three, there are three other existing facilities. We don't know the specific nature of those facilities as far as the, um, you know, the, the, if they're male or females that they serve. Uh, we just know that they're state licensed through, uh, the Adams Board, and so all these facilities are not to be confused with like a sober living home, these are all specifically serving, uh, populations with mental illnesses. And so, um, I can only speak to, uh, them being, uh, categorized as small residential facilities, so having five or less occupants, uh, no more than, uh, not, not six or more, not categorizing in a large, uh, residential context.
I, I do have a question, maybe a councilman, you could answer this one. Um, have, have there been any issues with the other residential care facilities? I mean, why would, I'm just trying to understand. Oh, yeah, issues with the other residential care facilities?
There have been some issues with people wandering a little bit and I mean, we get calls about them, but.
Nothing un- out of the ordinary, it hasn't been a crime, there's no one, I mean, you know, I'm just trying to understand what.
Well, there, there have been instances where there have been stolen stores, uh, I don't know what the situation was, there's been incidences where they think some of them have gone to a known uh, drug house, uh, close to the facility. That's really all, in the little bit of time I've been there, that's it, but it's just that, uh, the residents are more aware, and they've been living there thirty, the one lady's been living there sixty years on the street, across the street from her, that house used to have residents of four sisters, four nuns, they used to be there, and I, I just don't think they want a big change in the neighborhood, uh, with, with right in the neighborhood. Those other facilities, ones on a street uh, by a, a church, ones at the end of the street with the church, the other ones are just not right in the center of a neighborhood with houses with families next to them, um.
Could we, could we pull up the, the slide, the site, where it is in proximity to the, the freeway? I mean, it.
It's right next to the freeway.
Yeah, sort of isolated, um, I don't, you know, what I do know about residential care facilities, you don't want to isolate folks from the mainstream, I mean, that's the whole idea is to reacclimate and, and bring people to a more normal environment. Um, I, honestly, I don't see this being in the middle of a neighborhood because freeway bisects.
Those from Lorraine Avenue down the west, those, those houses are all, you know, single house.
Was raised on the west side, I understand, I understand. I mean, I have a couple around my house, I live on Euclid Avenue, I, we have not had, I raised a kid there.
Well, no, that, well, and they have some Adams Board there, some of the suspect of it is he's a startup, he's not Adams Board, they're just a little when we went to the house, they just said some questions, how long have you been doing this?
Just asking questions, I'm trying to know, I'm just giving you what I was told, I mean, I was there, it's up.
Okay, um, I think, um, let's continue our question, is the building, is the house currently vacant?
Yes.
Yes, there's nobody living in there at the moment, okay.
Just a quick question for the applicant, um, as far as the requirements for the state, can you just explain where you are in, in obtaining those licensures for it to be a residential facility?
At least somebody as far as getting residents in there?
Well, it's just, it's approval from the state, have you received that approval yet for this facility?
I can't at this moment, because without the permit, I can't move on.
Okay, I didn't know if there was any like preliminary, like assessment of.
No, I looked, everywhere I looked, it said permit, 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 permit.
Gotcha, thank you for that.
Councilman Harsh, does this hand raise?
Thank you, um, Madam Chair, I do have a question for the applicant, uh, so through the chair. Um, I know that part of the plan is to hire people to manage the facility. Do you currently have any business partners who work in this field, or is this an expectation you have that you will, um, make those relationships later?
But, yes, I will hire some folks, most definitely, but I do have some people that I've been already in Corning Suite down in the Accra area, I have a lady that I've spoken with that's been in the business for thirty-plus years, and I have another advocate I've been, um, I've been kind of mentor as, as well. That's been kind of looking over my business plans and things of that nature, who's been in the business since two thousand sixteen with the daycare, which is kind of different, but some of the, you know, same rules kind of apply.
Uh, Madam Chair, the reason I ask is I think it's usually encouraging to see the full team that's going to take responsibility for a facility like this on the front end. Um, but I, I think that for the sake of the board, um, the issue that sort of like sticks in my craw the most is the thousand-foot radius. Uh, city council passed legislation, I believe it was some time ago, it was before my time, um, because they wanted to control density of facilities. And if we want to start questioning that, then perhaps we should revisit that legislation, but I don't think, um, uh, that it's, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it's a planning commission's purview to, uh, decide when, uh, and when not to do that, I, I think the thousand foot is pretty clear. Um, and that, that will be guiding my decision. Thank you.
Here's the thing, you can't hire anyone without a permit, you can't offer anyone anything.
Okay, ho- hold on, um, so, uh, commission members, um, uh, any additional questions? Or comment?
I do, um, through the chair to the president, what makes your programs stand out from the others?
What makes my program stand out further? It's this plan that I have. Like I said, when they come in, we, we're automatically, we're going to be prepped and ready for a plan with it, when they're not, they're not going to come and just be laying around just sleeping, letting days go by, by and by. Already looked at, it was, you got Benjamin Rose, you got Cleveland Public Libraries, they're already offering programs for free. Right now, they offer a program where they got some computer class, you have to be at least fifty-five years of age, and you get a laptop when you're done. So I'm already looking at some of the opportunities to partner with folks, but it, it's only so far I can go. And, uh, so, but I, I'll be ready.
Thank you. Commission members? Uh, thank you, councilman.
You're welcome, thank you.
Um, you're, you should.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the licensed residential facility at thirty-one twenty-two West Boulevard.
Second. Excuse me, sorry for the interruption, can you please, uh, just, um, uh, provide some type of rationale? And so on the screen, I do have bullet points listing, um, the criteria that you should be looking at, so you could choose anything on the screen that you feel fits this nature.
Because the facility meets all the applicable yard parking and sign regulations in the zoning law, zoning code?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion, second, any further discussion?
Well, Madam Chair, I, I would point out that it doesn't meet the zoning code, because it's within a thousand feet of another facility.
Right, um, the, eh, I think the, um, the motion was uh, giving some rationale for the variance, we do have the authority to provide a variance for things that do not meet the zoning code, so when, when a variance is requested or required, um, then we provide a rationale for that variance, so that's the difference. It doesn't, all variances don't meet some portion of the code, as you know, councilman.
Excuse me, uh, Madam Chair, it does look like Shannon did raise her hand, but I also state, um, it, it seemed like the commission member was stating the, uh, kind of the sighting of the, the home fitting into the nature of the, the neighborhoods, you know, single family, two-family contacts, not the thousand-foot buffer. Uh, Shannon did have her hand raised, I'll let her add any come to.
Shannon, do you have anything before we vote?
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, it's, this is for a conditional use, but I'll defer to Xavier here.
Okay, um, okay, so, um, call the roll. Anthony?
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
Curry?
No.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
And Harsh?
No.
Uh, motion carries, uh, you have a variance, uh, to, or the, uh, to move on. The board of zoning appeals next, I believe, in a few weeks.
That, that's true, uh, through the chair, I just want to clarify, you have the approval for the conditional use. You're scheduled for your variances, um, for the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, uh, the thirty-first of March.
I thought there was the two, uh, the Monday, right?
Correct, it's, uh, the last Monday of March, you'll be requesting the variances for being within a thousand feet of three other facilities and having over five occupants.
Right. Sorry, uh, this is North Coast Yard, uh, one oh five Erie Avenue, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do. I should also add, uh, Cassie McDonald from, uh, Monor Consultants is on the line and should be sworn in as well.
Say aye, sir Kathy, I see you. Yeah, alright, take it away.
Everybody, my name is Scott Skinner, Executive Director of the North Coast Waterfront Development Corporation. Um, just as a, you know, thirty thousand foot view, uh, review. My organization was created by the City of Cleveland, uh, with the sole focus of executing on developing our downtown Lake Park. Uh, that includes figuring out how to finance space, that includes securing financing and moving Coast Connector, which are the changes to the shore and land bridge projects through. And that includes actually facilitating future development on the twenty-five acres of land north of Brown Stadium, and potentially the land that Brown Stadium sits on currently. Um, everything that I am working on is complicated, uh, site work and infrastructure projects, and is three to five years away, most likely. However, and Cassie, uh, go to the next slide, please, unless she's controlling it, thank you. And however, uh, this is publicly owned land, uh, this belongs to the City of Cleveland. Uh, it is a surface parking lot that's used ten to twelve days a year, um, in Lake Erie, and I don't think residents of Cleveland should have to wait three to five more years to be able to access it and be able to, uh, utilize it and be able to have, uh, great experiences with their families and joyful experiences with their families, uh, on this publicly owned land. Go to the next slide, please. So, uh, again, I mentioned this site is twenty-five acres in total, we are talking about using just over an acre of it in the northeast corner, directly next to the Steamship Mather. The rationale for utilizing this quarter specifically, it, it is, it is on the waterfront directly, so folks will be able to access uh, and, and sit, sit directly on the water. It is, uh, directly adjacent to the Great Lake Science Set Center, who does lots of programming, including summer camps over the summer, that'd be able to utilize here. Um, and this is the only spot of that land that is visible from all sea. So from a visibility perspective, you'll actually be able to see this structure once it's up there. Go to the next slide, please. Uh, this is designed to be Cleveland's downtown backyard. Um, we're going to be offering free programming throughout the summer, um, to answer questions, specifically we're doing, but what we are, we are trying to build is something to, uh, provide opportunities for community partners who we've been working with including the City of Cleveland for the last year, to actually plan this, and, and a space for folks to, um, to enjoy the waterfront for free. There will be food and beverage opportunities, uh, for purchase, but the rest of our programming, the rest of our activities, um, are entirely free to the general public. This is meant to be, it's operating like a public park, uh, dawn to dusk. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Cassie, um, who's with Street Plans, Street Plans is a consultant that, um, an organization. They have an expertise in these sort of, uh, temporarily activation spaces. And I've done terrific work in Pittsburgh, San Francisco, Miami, and all over the country. Alright, Cassie, I want you to take away.
Thank you, Scott, and hello everyone, good morning. Um, so, jumping into the project, you know, the existing site, as Scott said, you know, currently it's a parking lot, but it has this really rich history of kind of industrial shipping, um, there's a lot of really raw materials there, you can see the lighthouse. You know, we have the, um, William, uh, Mather, um, as our kind of black backdrop on the site. Um, and we've really been inspired by all these kind of textures, materiality, but are also leaning into some of the ephemeral aspects. You know, the sunset down there, the wind, um, and pulling those into our design as well, uh, next slide. And so, you know, the site itself, it is a parking lot, um, this, I just want to call attention to a couple draw, or images here. So in the top left corner, um, you can actually see the lighthouse from that location. Um, then top right, that is kind of where our site will be located, we'll have a lovely deck there. I mean, that's where you can actually kind of see around the Mather, you can see that point of Voinavich right there. Um, and then in the middle row on the far left, that is the pedestrian access to the parking lot on the far west side. Um, to kind of, if you want to do a loop, people currently kind of walk around the site, it's about a point eight mile loop. Um, that next drawing, or that next image is the primary, uh, vehicular access to the site, and you can go straight back through there to access our space. Um, the next one is access to the tan lot, which is the kind of monthly parkers for, um, construction staff uh, for Rock Hall, um, and that's more of like a, a permitted parking area. Um, and then the next slide, or the next image is kind of our service um, and emergency services access along the pedestrian way, and that is, um, chained off on during normal hours. Um, next slide. Oh, next slide. There you go. Um, and then these top images are actually on site. Um, so it's looking down the waterway, you can see those concrete barricades that are, um, kind of protecting pedestrians and vehicles from going into the water. Um, and then the next image is kind of that pedestrian walkway along the Steamship Mather. You can kind of see there some of those post and rope, um, barricades that are also utilized over at Voinavich, uh, next slide. Um, so not only are we, you know, looking at the site, the present, um, his, and as well as the history of it, we're also really looking at what is this future vision, how are we pulling the ideas and the goals of the larger master plan into this space to be able to test the ideas? Um, see what works, see what doesn't work, see what people are really responding to. Um, so you know, there's these porches, spaces for play, thinking about art and seasonal attractions. And again, those kind of more ephemeral elements, the sunset, the wind, uh, next slide. Um, and with that, you know, the, they've done a ton of community outreach for the master plan, we also have a working group. Um, and we've done, through that outreach, we've really understood what the desired experiences are, and you'll see those reflected in some of the spaces and in the programming. Um, so there's this mix of kind of the passive programming, the idea of trails, some rest fit spaces, um, to more active programming, a lot of people are really recalled, you know, Captain Franks on the waterfront, coming together in community over a meal. Um, some of those active sports and recreation, uh, connecting to the water, um, and having those that, being able to access Lake Erie, whether it's, um, just being able to be on that waterfront, or the future, being able to actually get into that water. Excellent.
As well, um, Cassie mentioned a working group, um, about a, almost a year ago, uh, thinking that we might try something like this. Um, my organization did form a small working group made up of the city, the county, the stakeholders down there, so the Syls and the Rock Hall, the Browns, um, and then, uh, community leaders from organizations all around the city, including Maple Connections and Third Space Action Lab. So about fourteen or fifteen people, in addition to the community outreach done for the master plan, for this temporary pop-up space. Utilize these communities to inform, uh, what it should look like, what the program should look like, and have all folks from neighborhoods all across the city down to the space, so it's not solely being activated by downtown residents. and have all folks from neighborhoods all across the city down to this space, so it's not solely being activated by downtown residents. Please, Cassie, go.
Thanks for that clarification, Scott. Um, and kind of out of that working group, out of this, we, we really have developed these guiding design principles that we continue to go back through, through this process. Um, so, you know, the North Coast Yard design really is flexible. It's a space that, um, will continue to evolve and adapt as we learn more about what works and what doesn't work. Um, it's a space that we hope, and really empowers the community. It's creating a platform for, um, neighbors, residents, organizations, partners, to be able to experiment and collaborate. Um, and at the end of the day, we want this to be a joyful space. We want all of Cleveland to be able to come down and feel like this is a space for them, um, and be able to create joyful memories. Next slide. So, jumping into the design, um, you know, Scott gave a really good explanation of, you know, why we chose this site. Um, you can see it's in that, uh, northwest corner or northeast corner along the steamship Mather. Um, it is a little bit over, it's about a, an acre and a half. Um, and our parking is really kind of where it says parcel, um, oh fifteen. That's really our parking area directly to the left of our, um, area of work. Uh, next slide.
Well, I'm just adding, well, going to the next slide as well. And this site itself, what we are building on takes up eighty-six of what is twenty-one hundred parking spaces, uh, down there. So we are taking a fairly small, uh, of the overall area. In addition to the, Cassie just mentioned, we do have, uh, bike parking infrastructure and, or working with R T A to encourage, uh, those transportation to get to the site as well.
Nice, thank you. Um, so this is the existing conditions, and just a couple of things I want to highlight. Um, in the middle, uh, we have that area of disturbance, and this is where our blacktop will be. Um, we're doing a mill and seal, uh, so there'll be, uh, a little bit of grading, um, to flatten that area out. Um, and it's about a little under half an acre. Um, right above that is where the existing transformers and utility meters are for the steamship Mather, um, and we'll be tying into that as well. Um, and then right above that, we have the existing fire hydrant, um, to be able to provide water access, um, as well as security, or, um, fire services. Uh, next slide. Um. This way. So this is, uh, the proposed site. Um, just to kind of reorient, the steamship Mather is at the bottom of the page. Uh, the Lake Erie waterfront is to the right. Um, so starting on the waterfront side, we're showing, uh, gracious wooden deck. Um, this is really responding to that feedback that people want to be able to access the water, even if we, you know, aren't able to get in it at this point. We really want people to be able to have that direct connection. Um, so we'll have some furniture out there that'll be bolted down for wind. Um, so some like really large gracious tables that we'll show in a bit, as well as some more loungy type furniture. Um, right after that, we have a couple, um, trees and some movable planters. We're showing four here. Again, this is a testing site, we want to see what works and what doesn't work. So we want to bring in a little bit of nature, but really be thoughtful about what we can feasibly maintain and what will live at this site in the, you know, windy and sun exposure conditions. Um, after that, we have some, uh, pergolas, will there be seating underneath? Um, and then above that, you can see some space for, uh, food trucks. Um, directly to the left of that, we have Q one, which is our Quonset hut structure, um, that sits on top of some shipping containers. Uh, below that will be our pop-up bar, um, that we're working, uh, on finalizing, uh, local vendor to operate for us. Um, we also have some space for future vendor to the left of that. Um, potentially a space for art installations, um, or engagement throughout the summer. Um, moving down, uh, we have the wood stage. This is also under a Quonset hut structure. Um, below that is the, are those transformers, um, and utility. That's also where we'll have our trash area. Um, and then directly to the left, we have that large gray box. That's the community blacktop I was speaking to. Um, and this was really a key programmatic element for us, hearing from about recreation uses. Um, potentially, we could have, you know, pop-up markets out here. Um, and we're looking at striping as kind of a gymnasium, uh, so kind of overlaying different programmatic elements. So basketball court with a couple pickleball courts on it. We can fit, um, up to two basketball courts and six pickleball courts on here. Um, we're also working with, uh, program partner to do roller skating on days. Um, so we're really seeing this as evolving and, um, having multiple uses depending on the day and, uh, the program partner. Um, we also have a variety of containers that are offering either lockers, storage, um, just open for seating, um, or kind of uses for maintenance. Um, next slide. Um, and then these elevations, just a couple items to call out. Uh, we have a couple heights in here. Um, our highest point is twenty-one feet, six inches. As you can see, it is well below the existing streetlights on site. Um, and also, we'll see in one of the renders, well below the height of the steamship Mather. Um, we're also kind of pulling a data line from the shipping containers. Um, and we're looking at kind of raising some of those, uh, fabric pergolas a little bit higher just to prevent people from, eh, being able to grasp them and, um, pull up on them. Um, next slide. And here you can see that, um, again, these are all kind of thinking about, uh, products that are, um, off the shelf. They're kind of industrial, so, you know, shipping containers, um, and the, the fabric Quonset huts are really used for more, um, tra, uh, short-term kind of industrial purposes and rethinking how they can be used on our site here. Um, so you see that large gracious deck, uh, that pergola space. And with the blacktop here, this is just, uh, kind of representative, so you can kind of understand the scale of the space. Um, but like I said, these will kind of have those overlapping programming on them so that it can be used, uh, a variety of different ways on different dates. Um, next slide. Here's that south entry. Uh, you can start to see some of the ways we're looking at incorporating art. Um, so that ground graphic, uh, walking into the space is a way to kind of, um, provide a sense of entry and excitement. Um, we're looking, we're, we've been talking to, you know, multiple city departments as well as, uh, community organizations and are looking to start, um, really talking to artists to get these nailed down. Um, next slide. Um, and here's that waterfront deck. Um, you can start to see those trees and some of the, the programmatic uses such as the food trucks. I mean, here's that good example showing kind of the height of our, our, um, Quonset huts in relation to the steamship Mather. Uh, next slide. And so, kind of jumping into the materiality and the branding of the site. Um, we worked with, uh, a local graphic designers, Shark and Minnow, to really look at a brand that not only speaks to the existing branding of the sites, the North Coast Harbor, North Coast Connector, and North Coast Master Plan, but have something fun, something bright. Um, you have that, uh, yellow triangle that's evocative of the lighthouse, as well as kind of the idea of wind, of incorporating flags on site. Um, we're using a lot of the same colors as those, um, other brands, um, and really trying to make it fun, bright, and accessible. Next slide. Um, and here's those kind of colors and materials that we were talking about brought into the, the space. Um, so again, kind of thinking about the industrial materials, the shipping containers and Quonset hut, but like bringing that brightness and color, um, by painting them, some of the fabric shade details. Uh, so the Quonset huts are, are fabric, um, and then having those shade elements across the site. Um, and then kind of playing off those kind of harder industrial materials with woods. So having wood in the, um, furniture elements, um, thinking about some heavy, um, kind of lumber that is evocative of railroad ties, um, painting the concrete barriers and having those wind elements. The accent colors you see here are directly pulled from the new furniture plan at Voinavich Park. So ensuring that we do feel like we have a cohesive language across the whole waterfront. Uh, next slide. Um, and here's, uh, the furniture on site. Um, again, the ones on the deck will be bolted down. Um, the rest, most of the rest of the furniture will actually be able to be closed up and put out on a daily basis. Um, we're really looking at treating this site as kind of park hours, so dawn till dusk. Um, and looking to hire a site manager who will, you know, bring out these furniture kind of in our more active days, um, Friday through Saturday through Sunday. Um, and then having it be more of a passive park space during, um, uh, other hours. Uh, next slide. Here are those main structural elements, so you can see those fabric container covers, uh, the Quonset hut elements. Um, and the first image is kind of that raw product example. The second image is kind of seeing that in, in a space. Um, you know, we're, usually these are for like salt sheds or kind of more industrial spaces, but they have been used with success, and you can see kind of the lightness and kind of the transparency that we really like, um, for this site and that example. Um, and then shipping containers, we have some standard ones, um, that'll be used for storage, and then the open side ones, um, that can be used more for the bar spaces, for the engagement booth, um, to have that just kind of off-the-shelf ability, um, to open those up. Next slide. Um, some examples of the types of furniture, so again, having the, the ones that are easily folded up and put away, um, outside of, uh, um, business hours. Um, so, but bringing in those woods, those metals, and then some of these, um, ones that'll be on the porch. So some lounge chairs. Um, we're looking at doing these long gracious tables with, um, kind of an off-the-shelf steel leg and some, uh, four by four by ten pressure-treated wood beams, um, that can be fabricated on site by either volunteers or staff. Next slide. Um, and then thinking about some of the more accessory elements, um, we're looking at kind of trash cans, um. We're, we're thinking of like repurposed items, but, you know, uh, after talking to the planner and some other people, we're, we're reevaluating and want to make sure that these, you know, the wind down there is pretty strong, and we want something that's a little bit more robust and seagull proof, because we have lots of seagulls down there. Um, but then, you know, we're looking at bike racks, uh, spaces for planters, and then thinking about, um, how we can have robust but, um, shade elements that are also not gonna kind of fly out and hurt someone. Next slide.
Well, you, you can probably, we don't need to, since you've been through design review, I think we can go pretty quickly here.
Okay. Um, so we're also looking at a variety of repurposed furniture. Um, these are some of the tree elements, or trees that we're looking at, uh, dependent on availability. Um, lighting, uh, we do have some existing, uh, streetlights. Um, and then we're looking at, again, this is kind of a dawn till dusk space. Uh, but we do have some security lighting here, um, and then lighting some of the interior of the spaces for ambient lighting. Um, wayfinding, uh, is more kind of a temporary, um, spray painted on type elements for signage. Um, so if you go to the next slide, we're looking at kind of repasting, um, working with local artists, kind of that spray painting, stencils, um, some kind of freestanding signage that can be put out daily, and then working with artists to have some key, um, kind of breadcrumbs. Um, and then again, those art opportunities, so thinking about wayfinding breadcrumbs, asphalt art, murals, using existing sculptures, and then wind-activated elements. Next slide.
I think we're good.
Yeah.
That's basically it.
I'm trying to be thorough, I think, shit. The, the last thing I'll say is this is meant to be a temporary space. This is meant to speak to the master plan. This is not a permanent build-out, something that we hope is seasonal and comes back, uh, every spring and summer to activate the space that's, uh, out there.
And I just wanted to add a few notes, Madam Chair, if you would. Um, you know, just some backstory on where we've been and where we're going, and then some paperwork that we'll, uh, cover. But, uh, so the ARPA funds that we received is precisely for this work. So that was a million dollars, um, a lot of the hard work that, uh, former Director Hong worked on with some of our staff to secure those funds. Um, that's what's gonna help, uh, move this project forward, but also North Coast, um, has, uh, Waterfront Development Corporation has already been using their own funds to get us to this point, so we appreciate that. And what we heard from community engagement was really, you know, and this is with every project, there's this dead zone between when we come out and do all this, hey, what do you think about these great ideas on the lakefront? And all this time goes by before they see anything happen. So this is exactly why we instituted this, uh, you know, pursued these funds for near-term interventions. We want to really activate and get them going as soon as possible. Drum up this support, so then when this build-out actually occurs, people are used to this space that we've reclaimed it for our community, and, um, we actually invite everybody at the commission to come down to some of our events, you know? Um, we've got, uh, you know, if, if you're into, um, cornhole, we, you know, here's the open challenge. Uh, we could play some horse or, um, you know, just watch a sunset, but we encourage everybody to come out. Um, it also gives us the opportunity to test a lot of the ideas from that master plan, really play them out over time with, you know, minimal, you know, if something fails, it's sort of minimal issue there. Um, so we expect to improve those designs over time. Um, but it's also an opportunity where we could use art programming and the design itself to really tell the community stories. So, um, it went through, uh, downtown flats, um, with, uh, schematic design approval. The applicant today is actually requesting final approval, if that's okay with the, uh, commission. Um, just some of the recommendations from that committee, um, considering off-the-shelf products. I think the team is covering that very well, um, in terms of wind concern and all that as well. Um, what their overwintering strategy is, and we've already been in discussion about that. And then, you know, combining their schedule with, uh, a lot of the other downtown and lakefront schedules, and there's very good coordination so far with that. Um, so the only, uh, recommendation we would have is to approve final with the condition to work with staff on the final design details and programming schedule, and that the signage, if it needs a variance, would come back, but we don't expect to bring that back, and then public art would come back to you.
The signage could go to staff too, meaning.
Well, yeah, just variances would come back.
On this one. Commission members, any questions or comments? I would say like signage is important, so on this one, if it's temporary, um, we can give that to staff. I mean, the idea of more signage, more public art, the better. From my perspective, I know that there are rules against that, but I, I do think we ought to allow that flexibility and for it to come to staff. Um, I do have two questions. One, who, will someone staff this?
Yes, so we're, we'll be hiring, uh, a position to staff this, uh, summer. Uh, we're also working with local partners, the Great Lake Science Center, um, specifically, and Downtown Cleveland, Inc., um, to expand their ambassador program in Voinavich, to open this space as well.
So, you know, staffing mean, uh, during light hours, someone will always be there?
Right. It's not always, but, uh, the entire like twelve hours of light, but someone will be there for the majority of the time, yes.
And the second question is, um, is the, um, even the, since it's temporary, the short-term maintenance in the purview of the city or the waterfront?
That's us.
If something breaks or if something you guys will, and you have a budget for maintenance?
Yes, that, that's built into our budget, so the full budget does get mentioned as a million dollars. It came from city planning, from our tag ARPA funds, and then my organization is bringing in two hundred fifty grand of our annual budget as well. And maintenance repairs are factored into that.
And last question, what do you think the life expectancy is of this?
Yeah, um, that's a good question. I think, um, we're hoping that this evolves slightly, uh, every spring and summer. Uh, the life expectancy is really based on when you start to see development down there. Um, if, uh, if, I don't, slightly, but if next year we started to, you know, together financing packages for some of the public space and the master plan, and we had, you know, empty family or hotel builders down there, um, this would, I don't think that's a likely scenario. This is meant to sort of, again, every spring and summer, until we start to see that actual development.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, Madam Chair, uh, great designs. Uh, I love the color palette, so that's my organization's color palette. Um, personally, uh, going back to very early in the presentation, you talked about, um, getting community feedback. You have the working group. I'm just curious, how do you see that element continuing, uh, throughout the summer?
No, it's, it's, it's a really good question. Uh, we're planning on being out there, um, for major events and gathering data, asking people how they're experiencing it. Uh, we also plan on having sort of QR codes on some of the shipping containers, where folks can respond to, and we'll take them to our website to respond to what they're doing, what they're lacking, what they would like to see. Uh, then we'll also, uh, take them to places where they can They will also take them to places where they can continue to comment on the master plans.
And just a suggestion, oh, I'm sorry, Cassie, go ahead.
Say, sorry, in addition to that, we're looking at having, working with an artist to have an engagement booth on site. So having kind of an art activated storytelling element where people can both respond to the existing site as well as talk about their histories and the future goals of the space as well.
Thank you, Cassie. That's really encouraging. And I think I was thinking of like outreach to nonprofits. You know, I'm even thinking of like things that I may encourage my team to think about doing down there this summer. And so in addition to just the organic, you know, folks coming in, you know, just thinking about the thousands of nonprofits.
I can't announce anything right now because we don't have a contract signed necessarily. Do you have a number of nonprofits that will be coming down here to utilize this space? I would take this as an opportunity to call out on the website, northcoastyard.com. Folks can also go there and input their information if they want to be a part of this and if they want to utilize this space. The whole concept for this, right, is it brings to the city of Cleveland and nonprofits, nonprofit organizations are often looking for programming or activation space. If you're a nonprofit organization in the city of Cleveland, consider this your free space to use. Reach out to us and we can schedule something as well.
Yeah, I'd just like to commend everyone for trying to figure out how we provide public access to every inch of this lake. I mean, if you go to most cities, I was just in Hawaii and high tide, the city owns, right? So we need to figure out how to, how to leverage that. I think this is a great opportunity for this city to learn how to program great spaces. I mean, you have the opportunity here to activate it through programming, but also learn from how it works passively. Because I think that's a failure of most of the green spaces downtown. So hopefully we can take that knowledge and begin to apply it in some derivation around the city.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Just a thought, because I really like this. I like that, I am a big fan of testing things and testing them and doing them very well. And I think this kind of investment in the kind of temporary use, I think is significant enough that you can imagine, you know, especially programming, if there's a small basketball tournament or things, it's going to drive people here. It's still a, for me, like a, there will be a kind of a heavy change in people sort of in their mindset, knowing that they can come on a regular basis. Just because, you know, I'm not telling you something you don't know. But one thought might be to, like if you, if the kind of parking, on the times when this isn't being used and the parking isn't really needed. If you might drive a couple super large events. Now, where I was going was like, what if there was a Cleveland Fleaback? This was like the, the entry point to it, but you use the whole site. And you start to get thousands of people down to then remember about this space. Like, are those things possible?
Yes, that is absolutely, absolutely the goal. What, how, one of these spaces, this is not a unique idea to Cleveland, right? These sorts of activation spaces have been all over the country, Pittsburgh, DC, Miami. And part of what Street Plan's expertise is and what they've, they've shown us is that they grow over time. Your first summer, you may not have it as active as you want it necessarily, but it grows every summer as it becomes more right? Five acres here, right, to play around with. And if there, we are planning several large scale events throughout the summer, really using times when folks already are coming downtown or coming there. So our soft opening will be a roller skating rink during Pride Week. But the Fourth of July, folks already go down there to watch fireworks. So this space will be open, so folks can utilize that during the day for a Fourth of July watch party. And we're working with a number of other folks. The airshow is another example. Folks come down and we'll be able to utilize this space and we're having conversations with large scale
Okay, thank you. So I think what I heard is you're, we're asking for us to do final approval, to come to staff with details. And including even signage and just basically we're, we're allowing you to work with staff unless you can't come to some agreement, then you can come back. Is that correct?
Oh, Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve the North Coast Yard for final. With the caveat that the group continue to work with staff on details, final selections, signage, et cetera.
A second. Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yeah.
Booker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Curry Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Motion carries. How soon will we see this?
So we'll start construction in
Fabrication. All right, go back to page seven. This is in design review. It's T H A Outlet Signage, three thirty one O nine West Twenty Fifth Street. Aldo, are you, do you swear to tell, are you online? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? This is for final approving approval.
Yeah, good morning all. Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. And I think we have, they have your presentation up. There, if for my commission members, if you'll look at page seven, just so we can go through it quickly. There was final approval, but there were four or five conditions. So Aldo, as you present, and it looks like Xavier is going to help you. Please, we'll, we'll need to address those conditions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Xavier Bay, a zoning planner with City Planning. Got to go through this quickly. Today, you're saying a proposal here. This is actually, this signage has already been erected. So this is a kind of like aftermath. You're basically looking at this, sorry, sorry. Basically, this is coming to you because it's in a design review district and this body has the, you know, power to vary the sign code in design review districts. And so they're proposing wall signage and a blade sign. The variances being requested today are only pertaining to the blade sign. And so this property is located in a local retail business district, just at the corner of West Twenty Fifth and Clark Avenue. I've got a near west side. Just provide some, you know, Google imagery here. You could get a context of the neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood. I'm sorry, it's, it's a, it's a commercial corridor. And so basically, some of the criteria you're basing your approvals off of are design compatibility, design guidelines, and minimum variation from the zoning code. So for projecting blade signs, applicants are maxed out at twelve square footage. The proposal here is coming in at eighteen point two square feet. So the variance being requested is six point two square feet for the blade sign. The applicant Aldo is online. If he has any other comments or concerns, he can, he can voice them. And I see Brittany Pavon, the neighborhood planner, is also online. And I'll let her speak more to the determinations of the local body. A local designer view body. That's all I have for you.
Do you want, who do you want to go first? Then we'll have Aldo go first?
I think if Aldo wants to respond to any of the comments from local designer view. I believe that that makes sense.
That would be good.
Yeah, this is, you know, we have presented to the local design review. And basically, we turned it in and we got the approval. And we didn't know that that blade sign was above the square foot.
Okay. So actually, that's interesting. So you went to design review. And then you put it up, then you found out you needed a variance? Is that correct, Aldo? We lost him. Is that true? When they pulled the permit and we didn't catch it?
Correct. It seems like
Seems like the applicant wasn't aware that he needed the zoning approvals from this body, not the local designer view body.
But they didn't get caught when we, by us, when we, when he went to pull a permit?
Well, apparently, you could pull a permit and seek your local designer view hearing separately. Like you could, you could have your local designer view hearing before you even pull a permit. So it, so it could be that, you know, he's, he was heard by local designer view and then pulled his permit and thought that he was good because he already had his local designer view meeting.
But is that our responsibility to flag something not his? He went and pulled a permit?
The one question, does he have, did he get a permit? Because the thing is, a sign is not supposed to go up until a permit is actually received. And so it has to go through our process. And so if the next step was planning commission.
Correct. There, there is a permit submitted.
Not submitted, but did he, did he get approved? So he does not have a permit. So it should not be up.
I just wanted to verify that there's not a glitch in our system where someone got a permit and I've been, go ahead. It looks like we lost him. Does the baby, Brittany, want to say something?
Sure, I'll hop on. Hello. Uh, yes, this came to design review last year, at the end of last year. And it came to us a couple of times. There were a few complications with getting the design review, just kind of steady. But overall, the main concern was the building itself because we have some historical elders on design review committee and those comments pertain to mainly the building. There was a comment on choosing one sign versus the other, but ultimately the designer decided to choose both. But other than that, the sign was approved through the committee body. Yeah, oh, and this is a retroactive approval, by the way. This is already been put.
So I think we lost the applicant, correct?
I'm back here.
Did you pull a permit for this?
We applied back in September. We, right before we went through the design review. We, we went through the design review, we got the approval. It went through the zoning. We were following with everybody last year. We never heard back from no one. And just a week ago or two weeks ago, I heard that the blade sign was oversized.
But did you pull a permit? Did you actually pull a permit? Did you pay and pull the permit?
We applied for the permit. The permit hasn't been pulled yet.
Okay, I just, just want to verify. You didn't actually have a permit to put this up?
Well, I didn't put the sign up. So the owner ordered the sign. He was, I, I explained to owner that, you know, the, the city, we don't have the permit in hands. That's why we didn't finish the job. The canopy is not up. The, you know, the channel letters are not up. But he couldn't wait no more because he was trying to, we tried, I tried to reach out to the city many times. I never heard back. That was four months back in October. So we're in March right now. And I haven't done my part, but he hired a separate contractor to get that sign up. But that's where we at. I mean, I've been shocked when I got that. I thought that everything was done, you know, with the permit process. We submitted back in September, late September, beginning of October. We went through the design review. We got the approval. Then we never heard back after that.
So can I just explain the conditions to me a little bit?
Local designer view.
Are these like things they want to, to be done now after it's already up? Or were these from previously?
I'd have to defer that question to Brittany Pavon, unless everyone has a motion for him.
Yeah, this, these conditions were from the designer view last year. I believe before he actually did the installation and the painting.
Um, okay, so to the applicant, and one more question for me. What portions of these conditions can you still do? Or still willing to do? There's an awning, right? You said, can you?
There's no awning. We have to do the lighting on the awning, the canopy. We have to do the main channel letter sign. And by the way, we have basically all ready to go. I mean, we're just waiting for the permit to be, you know, done. You know, that's all we're, you know, we're waiting for. We have the sign, the bottom sign, we got the canopy, that's a marquee canopy, we got the lighting ready. Everything is ready to go. And that's, that's my part. That's what I'm waiting for. I'm waiting for this permit to be released. Five months, five months later.
Well, Madam Chair, what we refer to this professionally is asking for forgiveness. So since, since we got that on the table and we know why he's here, let's just, let's just deal with it. So I'm going to try and form a motion. Dealing with the sign first, I need to approve the sign as constructed and installed with a six point two square foot variance required to, to allow that to happen. On all of the balance of the design review questions or comments, the applicant must comply with those items. And work it out with staff prior to, prior to completing or starting the work.
A second. We have a motion in a second. That means that you can work with the staff on what's required to go ahead and finish the job, the awnings, et cetera. And staff will work with you on that. So call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Curry Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Motion carries. So there are a series of demolitions. And Elizabeth, you are going to do them all, is that correct? You can go fairly quickly. Let's try to get through them. We'll go them, we'll go through them one by one. But we, as usual, we don't need too much if they're in horrible shape. So let's start with the first one, which is two oh two five dash zero one four. This is eight zero zero five Holton Avenue.
Okay. So hello again. Just like before, the sixth that I'll be presenting to you is Department of Building and Housing Demo Bureau conducting demolition on behalf of the city's economic development office. All of these structures are city of Cleveland owned. They're all condemned. We've done all of our environmental due diligence on them and they are ready to be demolished. All of the structures, including basements, slabs, parking, footers, foundations. That's this type of thing will be removed. All of these sites will have backfill, topsoil, seed and straw. They all sit in the Opportunity Corridor Development Zone. And specifically the East Seventy Ninth Development Zone. So eight zero zero five Holton is a church with the associated parking.
We just heard that's Arsenio Hall's Father's Church.
Really?
What did my face say? It's Arsenio Hall's Pato's Church. I'm sorry, Arsenio. Here's your overall site context. They're all located in the same area. It's not the best. It's all Opportunity Corridor. This one has significant dumping damage interior. There was a small fire interior. Went missing. It's, it's not in the best shape. So again, everything will be removed. There is a basement in the church, so that's going to come out, your footers, backfill, seed and straw.
We're good. Maybe you should make a motion. You press your not saying. Make a motion.
Make a motion that eight zero zero five Holton Avenue be demolished for, for demolition.
Second. Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yeah.
Booker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Curry Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Normally we'd put a plaque up, but I understand. Next one is eight zero zero eight Holton Avenue. Alrighty. Hopefully Arsenio is not involved in this.
These are literally across the street. This Okay, uh, these are literally across the street. Uh, this is, um, single family. Again, all the same conditions with demolition, um, backfilling. Who owns it? Make a motion, I make a motion that eight zero zero eight Holton Avenue be approved for demolition?
Second. Motion and second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott? Harsh?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries eight zero zero, or eight zero one two Holton Avenue.
Alright. Uh, next door to the previous one, again, it's a, um, there are two structures. The front one is a small apartment building, four to six units. That is this particular structure. In the ring is, um, a small single family, if you will.
Is that in a different?
No, it will be.
Eight zero zero, same, twelve, okay.
Yes. Make a motion for approval for demolition at eight zero one two Holton Avenue?
Second.
Motion and second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero one seven Holton.
This is a single family? All the terms apply. Make a motion, I would like to make a motion for eight zero one seven Holton Court for demolition.
Second.
Motion and second, call the roll.
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Motion carries eight one two three Holton Avenue.
Single family. Make a motion for eight one two three Holton Avenue for demolition?
Second.
Motion and second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. And the last one is eight two zero seven Holton Avenue.
Eight two zero seven, uh, is a small manufacturing facility. It is, um, the garage with the associated manufacturing site. Madam Chair, I make a motion for demolition for eight two oh seven Holton Avenue.
Second. Motion and second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Motion carries, um. Oh, there's more?
No, that's it, that's good.
Sure. Um, so, uh, August is going to take the next two demolition, uh, which are Warner Swayze. Is there someone online or here to speak to those?
Yes, yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Yes.
How can you not remember?
Because I don't do it all the time. It's in your, it's in your memory bank. Alright, Madam Chair is leading the room, and we'll get started here.
They'll be presenting both schematic approval of the plan and then final approval for demolition, and we'll vote on that.
In, in, in that order?
Uh, the, it's a combined presentation.
Okay, well, go ahead and present for both of these dockets, the demolition, as well as schematic design, and we'll, we'll entertain a motion individually, once you're done. Um, who's here on behalf of that client?
Uh, we have a developer for Penrose.
Okay, go ahead, Will.
Uh, and we also have some others from our, from our team as well.
Yeah, hi, I'm Stephanie.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Stephanie Hayward from Moody Nolan.
Nick Slaughterbeck from Moody Nolan.
Ed Peppers, Midtown Cleveland.
Thank you, um, go ahead, please.
Yeah, um, thank you, everyone. Um, members of the commission, I appreciate your time this morning. Uh, we were, we were in front of you, um, two weeks ago, um, and we needed to come back through because we had it combined as one, and there's really two different components that we're, uh, discussing today. Just a quick overview, if you can go to the next slide. Um, Warner Swayze, um, if you're not familiar, but I imagine a lot of people are, um, is just, uh, a great iconic building, um, in the city of Cleveland, out in the Midtown neighborhood. Um, we've been working at Penrose, we've been working on this development, um, since I believe two thousand seventeen or eighteen, and, um, it's been a long time coming. It, uh, will comprise of three separate condos. Um, the first phase, that is what we're here today for, consists of two, um, Lytec affordable condos, so we have a hundred and twelve units, um, fifty-six being senior housing, uh, the additional fifty, fifty-six being family housing. I'm kind of stacked throughout the building. Um, we are planning, um, a, a future phase that will come back to you for, hopefully in the next few years. Um, but today's is the first phase of the, the affordable units. Um, the total construction cost around fifty-two million dollars, and, uh, we do have two nine percent awards from the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. We have a lot of other soft sources, um, and, and, uh, historic tax credits as well. We have a, um, a large support from the city of Cleveland, which we're very gracious for. Um, a lot of financial support from Paga County, which we're also very gracious for. Um, and all of these sources are starting to, um, will, will be expiring soon. So our goal is to close by the end of the year. But as part of our process, we're, um, looking to do a stabilization phase to start sometime this summer to help get the building, um, it stabilized, use the funds that might expire, and then move towards our closing at the end of the year. Um, next slide, please. Um, you can kind of skip through to the aerial. Um, so again, Warner Swayze is, um, on the east side of the city of Cleveland. Um, the next slide, there's a more zoomed in picture of the actual project site. Um, you can see there it's along Carnegie near East, East Fifty-Fifth. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, these are some of the existing conditions that are surrounding the building. Next slide. You, you can really go to the existing conditions, um, photos. Um, so, uh, we're, we're excited to work on this beautiful building and renovate it. And I'll, I'll turn things over to, uh, my colleagues from Moody Nolan, talk about the specifics of, of what we're, um, here today for.
Thanks, Will. If you go to the, um, next slide. We'll get to the demolition. So here's the historic image. We'll keep going through the, the demolition. So here's our, our proposed demolition is kind of the first scope that we're looking for, final approval today. As Will said, we, we're, we're phasing the project, and this is, um, the drawings that we are going to submit sooner so we can get started on this scope of work. This summer, hopefully. Um, so the items highlighted in red are the areas that we are proposing to, to demo. It's the sawtooth sheds, and then also what we call Building Six. Um, we've done a lot of analysis of these buildings. You can go to the next slide. And, uh, structural, they are not structurally sound, um, and the feasibility of keeping them is not, it, it's just not feasible. Um, also, we have met with the Fire Department Lieutenant Alexiak and working on life safety and demoing these project, these parts of the buildings are going to allow to open up the courtyard and, and also allow, you know, fire truck access to all parts of the building, which they weren't going to have otherwise. Um, you can move to the, and then the, that, those other photos were the gas building along Carnegie, which will help us open up the access for our trash service and other building services. I'll be back there. Um, once those buildings are demolished, then this is our proposed site plan, which now we are asking for schematic approval on this. And we're going to have about seventy-four parking spaces. Uh, everything to the north of that existing building is, we are not going to touch at this, at this point. Um, we will just be working on items south of the existing building to remain, and then Carnegie. You go to the next slide. Uh, some site amenities that we are looking at, the concepts of having, you know, raised planter beds, having pedestrian walkways. To, you know, it'll be family housing, and so just trying to keep the parking lot safer to get you to the entryway. Uh, the walkways will be accessible with a less than two percent slope, and also having a welcoming entry at the, at the knuckle of the building. Next slide. Here are, uh, proposed site plantings, um, native plants that will do well on the site, our stormwater management plan. Um, and then here is our proposed site on the ground floor. The yellow spaces are the resident amenities. Uh, the resident entry is right at that knuckle in the Carnegie building, and then the red is future commercial tenant space. And then the wedge building is north of the, the Carnegie building would be a future phase as well. And then this is our typical floor plan. Floors two through five are all, um, apartments, and these units stack for all four floors. Uh, so this project, we are getting historic tax credits, as we mentioned, and so these, um, these are showing our elevations, bringing the windows back to their full original size, the masonry openings, um, mullion patterns are matching what was there. Uh, we've worked closely with Chippewa to get these all approved. And that, that's our presentation. Thank you.
Uh, staff, is there staff here to apply?
City Planning, good morning. It is still morning, yes.
Hi, Cam.
Hi.
Uh, so this was presented to the planning commission, although there was not a quorum during the last meeting, and so uh, the one, I guess, error, I'll, I'll point out that happened during the last meeting is that we had the demolition combined with the development presentation, and it should have been separated. So since then, for this last meeting, our meeting yesterday, our design review meeting yesterday, we separated them, created a, a separate case number, and so now uh, because there was not a quorum, we just felt that the project should be presented as completely as it was during the last meeting, so anyone who was not present had an opportunity to see the project as a whole. Um, so they can get a better idea of what it is that they are voting on. Uh, the committee did have conditions on the approval, uh, from the meeting on the shoot, four, no, six?
On the sixth, yeah.
Thank you. I had to do a little quick math there, uh, on the sixth, and that included, uh, more details for the treatments of the parking lots. Um, they wanted, uh, a streetscape along Carnegie and really to confirm whether the trees could be replaced along Carnegie or restored. Um, they wanted details, uh, about the railings and the color of the windows, the profile, which they will get to us. And I would say one of the more, um, prominent, uh, issues was regarding the walkway between the, um, rows of parking that are adjacent to each other. So if that's a pedestrian walkway in between the rows, that it was ample enough to, um, accommodate pedestrians, uh, walking there. And whether or not that they would use a curb or bumper stops. And so I think in further discussion, they had agreed that they would do a curb along that walkway. So I think that is all I have.
Thank you. Um, commission members?
Make a motion? Make a motion to give schematic approval to the Warner and Swayze project at fifty-seven oh one Carnegie Avenue with the conditions outlined by the Euclid Corridor Buckeye Design Review.
Second.
Oh, roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry is not, or she accused, um, McCray Scott?
Yes.
And Harsh?
Yes.
We have one more. We have a demolition too, second item.
Uh, I make a motion for the approval, final approval for demolition of Warner and Swayze at fifty-seven oh one Carnegie Avenue?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck. I know this has been in the plan for some time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think we can.
Okay, um, we're on page sixteen.
Yes.
Huntington Bank Field naming signs. This is at a hundred Alfred Lerner Way. Um. But is staff presenting this?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I have a small presentation, and then the applicant has their overall package as well.
Um, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
So help me God.
There you go.
Great, thank you. Good morning again. Xavier Bay, zoning planner with City Planning. Uh, this is a short presentation, just showing you the, um, uh, I think naming rights change of the Brownsfield. So here's the Huntington Field, uh, sign present, uh, sign. Sorry, I think I had my words jumbled up here. Huntington, uh, Brownsfield signings change. And so they're proposing two wall signs and four, uh, total roof, uh, roof signs. And so now here you could see just some brief imagery of the proposed wall signage, uh, along Alfred Lerner Way and I believe Erie Side Ave. And then you could also see the top of the, um, stadium there. They're proposing two of those Huntington Bank Field, um, signages along the top of the roof. And so, uh, this, everybody is aware of the location here, uh, just north of the, uh, Shoreway, the Brown Stadium. This is in a general industry zoning district. And really, you're seeing this because, uh, applicants are limited to one roof sign, and the square footage of their wall signage is limited based on their, uh, linear frontage. And so you're, you're basing your, um, approvals for the variances off of the usual criteria, design compatibility, design guidelines, and new variation from the zoning code. And so, um, apologies, I did, uh, last minute add some of the additional roof signage, which you'll see in their presentation. It's basically the scoreboard. The two scoreboards on site are going to have the Huntington logo erected above the top of the stadium overall, so they're categorized as roof signs. Um, so today, the applicants are requesting wall sign variances. Uh, the two wall sign variances you're proving, uh, are the variances for the three hundred, three hundred and one square, uh, sorry, three thousand three hundred and one square footage of all sign. So basically, they're, they're mixed out at one thousand eight hundred sixty-six and a half square feet. So everything left over is what you're basically including in your approval today. So the two wall sign, uh, variances are going to be the one along Alfred Lerner Way, which is two thousand five, uh, two thousand fifty-six point five square feet, and the wall sign along Erie Side Ave, which is going to be requesting a variance of two thousand six hundred seventy-eight point seventy-five square feet. I will just add the, uh, the signage is going to be the same size on both sides. Uh, the difference in the variance is because they're limited to the, um, secondary street facing portion of, of the stadium. And so the roof sign variances they're requesting are three additional roof signs, because they're only allotted, they're kept out of one roof sign per site. And so I'll hand it over from here, um, after just stating that this is a major public facility. Um, and these facilities, you know, the unique nature of, of the scale, the grandeur of, of the, you know, the facility, uh, calls for increased signage. And so I'll hand it over to Mr. McFarland for his, uh, sign presentation.
Thank you, Xavier. I appreciate the opportunity to present to the board. Uh, was made note of, made, made aware of this this last Monday. Um, we had gone through the design review process, um, with Dan and, and received administrative approval for, at the time, two wall signs on the north and south of the stadium, which are, uh, slightly lower in overall square footage than the previous building naming of First Energy. Uh, additionally, we wanted to, uh, to, to include the two, uh, roof branded signs that are viewable only from, uh, really airplanes and other, other higher buildings. Um, and those as well are slightly similar to the, the size and scale of the First Energy sign. Um, and then in, in addition, on the interior of the stadium, there are, uh, two additional naming signs for Huntington Bank, uh, at the scoreboard. Those have just been recently finalized and apparently those also meet the definition for a roof sign. They will only be viewable other than part of the, of the, I guess, the design of the item above the word Huntington Park might be viewable from the exterior, from the back. But these will also be, you know, there's a good rendering of it. So those are two additional. So I believe that the variance in this case is requesting is a total of three roof designated wall, sorry, roof designated signs. And then also I believe that you included some variance for additional area on the two previously administratively approved wall signs for the building naming Huntington Bank on the north and south elevations. Be happy to take any questions.
I think we're just adding a lot of signage. It's going to be hard to quantify here.
Correct, Madam Chair. I'll just also add, you know, typically in the future, you know, when more signage comes through for this site, typically you receive a whole signed package and you granted, you know, the approvals you deem necessary. And then any changes to those faces could be approved through staff administratively, similar to like what you've seen with the Guardians Stadium, things of that nature. Dan Schinkel does have his hand raised, so if you'll allow him to speak.
Yeah, Dan.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to mention that the applicant did come through design review. There, they were approved at that point, just with some notes about repairing the existing holes from First Energy. That work was actually completed when First Energy was taken down. And then they had just made some, just a recommendation around tweaking for legibility. But it appears that these are brand logos. And just wanted also mention that all of the signage that you're seeing is essentially replacing where First Energy previously was. The only new signage that you're looking at would be the scoreboard. The scoreboard we just got from the Browns about a week ago, so it did not get reviewed by design review. But knowing that they needed more than likely a variance because it is considered rooftop signage, we wanted to make sure to get all variances at once and not bring them back two weeks later from now to request two more variances. So we'll continue to work with Jim and actually Jim and I are trying to work out the time this afternoon to discuss the scoreboard signage.
I mean, I think, I think we should look at them all today, including that one. They should not have to come back for that, that one if we approve it. So, okay. Questions, commission members, councilmen, anyone about this? So here's the, here's the problem. Normally we would be very specific about square footage and, you know, so I think in order to allow this to move forward and not have the, if you go back to the the slide that has the variance, the detail of the motion. I think what I just heard is that from that, whoever's going to read the motion is missing an additional sign that we would like to add to this. Is that correct?
Correct, Madam Chair. For the roof signs, you're approving three additional roof signs.
Not two. So, so there would be, which is the scoreboard. So it would be added to this as for final approval if someone's going to make that motion. Okay. Do you have questions or thoughts?
Madam Chair, I'll take a stab at it. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Huntington Bank Field naming rights signs. Two wall signs that require a variance of two thousand, fifty-six point five square foot and two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight point seven five square foot along Erie and Alfred Lerner Way. As, as it relates to the roof signs, there are three additional signs that are required as a part of this effort. Notwithstanding the fact that I believe scoreboard signage should also be included in that because I got confused.
Yep. Those two plus the scoreboard sign.
So there's, three includes the scoreboard signage.
Correct. To the chair, there's four total roof signs being proposed. They're only allotted one per site, so they need the variance for three.
Three additional.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll simplify that for the roof sides to, to include three additional as a part of this variance request.
A second. Wait a moment, a second. I'm going to give you an award for that. Anyone have any further questions? Okay, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have Public Art Northeast 2025004. This is St. Clair Superior CDC. And this is at the I-90 overpass at East Seventy-Second Street. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not you? And are you presenting only for this?
No, they're presenting.
Oh, they're online. Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
And note that Mr. Fluker has stepped from the table. He is recusing himself. All right, go ahead.
Okay, thanks everyone.
It was, it was approved at the Northeast Design Review on March 4th with consideration to customize rather than mirror the images on the walls. We do currently have an ODOT permit pending and it's being reviewed by their aesthetics commu, committee. The, the team is working with our real estate group on the licensing agreement. Check this funded by Mandel Foundation and would be maintained by the St. Clair Superior CDC. And I'm going to turn it over to Joe, but just letting you guys know, and he'll probably go more into this. This mural is primarily by the same artist that's doing the mural on the Seventy-Second Street retaining walls further south on Seventy-Second in collaboration with local artists. Days One is going to be assisting her for this mural. And Councilman Harrison is aware of the project. I didn't hear back as far as support or not support, but he is aware of the project. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe.
Thanks Tara. Good morning, everyone. So we can, we can kind of cruise through this quickly. This is just work that we've been doing with the St. Clair Superior Development Corporation around connecting residents and visitors to Gordon Park and the neighborhood. Continue. This is just some examples of the work that we've been doing around pole banners and public art and murals and things like that. Continue through these. Keep going. Keep going.
She worked the, she's worked.
Keep going. So this, this is the, the first mural that was started last year by Louise Jones, which she's coming back in the spring to finish the east side of the mural. This is just south of the new mural that she's going to be painting. So you can continue on. So yes, this shows the, the bird mural, which is the now in progress one, and the new fish mural, which will be underneath the Cleveland Memorial Shoreway Bridge. So continue. So this, these are the current conditions. Current conditions, looking south, looking west, looking east. And this is a mock-up rendering of what the piece will look like. So she's, Louise is, is again, working with Days One and some other local artists to, to complete the mural. She's going to be working with the Metro, Metro Park's aquatic biologist to make sure that she's accurately representing native fish in Lake Erie. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. I forgot to say I do support this. I assume that. All right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Public Art at St. Clair Superior Overpass Bridge on East Seventy-Second Street.
Second question, a second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Okay, look at that. All right, we have another public art. This is Edgar Soto Distancia Sculpture. This is at the southwest corner of Scranton and South Point Drive on Metro Health Campus. This is for final approval. And this is Grace from the Sculpture Center. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? I saw nodding. All right, do you want to start?
Yeah, I can start. No, this is funded by, I'm sorry, sculpture is funded by Joyce Foundation.
Thanks. Sorry about this. It's funded by the Joyce Foundation. The sculpture, which is interactive and functional, was approved by the Near West Design Review on March 12th with one dissenting vote, one abstain. And they did recommend a descriptive panel and decorative ground material, but those were not conditions. Grace will go into the descriptive panel in, in her presentation. We also received a letter of support from Mary Beth Feek at RTA, who's the Director of Programming and Planning. And I just want to read this quick excerpt from her. "This functional sculpture will incorporate architectural themes from Puerto Rico and will serve as a repository of content center on art, stories and culture. RTA applauds the efforts of these partnerships to design art that celebrates a community. Through meaningful community engagement as part of the Twenty-Five Connect Study, RTA learned that writers and residents highly value public transit service that is culturally relevant and reflects a community's identity. The number eighteen bus route through the Clark Fulton neighborhood on the Metro Health Campus is an ideal location to install public art that celebrates a community's culture. We also received an email of support from Councilwoman Santana. And we will work with building and housing and mocap to get the proper building, housing and obstruction permits for the installation. I'm highly in support of this. I think that this is relevant in this neighborhood with the high Latino population. And I'm going to turn it over to Grace for her presentation. Thank you."
Grace, you're muted.
There we go. Okay, thank you. So nice to see you all today. Thank you for letting me speak about this project. I'm really excited to share with you. So this June, we are, the Sculpture Center, my organization, will be presenting a permanent outdoor sculptural installation by Puerto Rican artist Edgar Soto. The name of her art piece, La Distancia, will address themes of displacement and migration through the personal collective stories of Cleveland's Latinx community. This shelter is, will be placed in front of Metro Health, Glick Center in the Clark Fulton neighborhood. If you go to the next slide, so right now, the funders for this project include the Joyce Foundation in Chicago and the National Endowment for the Arts. We are working in partnership with Metro Health System. I have some representatives here from that. Metro West Community Development Organization and also Land Studio. And then as Tara mentioned, we have a letter of support from the RTA. So next slide, please. A little bit about us. So we were founded in nineteen eighty-nine. And we are one of the few institutions in the country dedicated solely to sculpture. We're in university circle. Oops, can you skip that? Just a brief sentence about us. We're in university circles and we engage artists, communities and our neighbors in sculptor-rich exhibitions throughout the year. Next slide, please. A little bit about the artists that we're working with. Edgar Soto is based in Chicago, internationally recognized. And she draws from her own Puerto Rican roots to explore stories of migration, displacement and home. Her career is on the up and up rise and recently her works have been acquired by the museum, the Art Institute of Chicago and the Whitney Museum of American Art. So next slide, please. Just a little samples of her work. She encourages audience engagement. And in some of these you see visitors peeping through viewfinders in which she places photographs of home and, and nostalgic elements. Some of the other pieces are public art projects that she has done. The one on Top Center is in New York City with the Public Art Fund. So the site we're proposing, this La Distancia Shelter will be in front of Metro Health. So the address twenty-five hundred Metro Health Drive. And it specifically will be the RTA bus stop that is on the southeast corner of Scranton Road and South Point Drive. And on this slide, you can see the little red box, which identifies the exact placement. Next slide, and just a visual, a photograph of what that actual place is. You can see there's already a concrete slab. This is exactly where the shelter would be placed. However, in order to install it, we will have to remove this slab. Next slide. And you can see in the solid red box is where the bus shelter, La Distancia, will, the actual footprint of it. Okay, next. And this is when you're sitting at the shelter, you would be looking at the outpatient pavilion at Metro Health. Just some more views, sitting and then looking slightly east at the Glick Center. And then looking down South Point Drive. And then another zoom in of the actual location. This is a schematic of what the actual artwork will look like. As you can see, it is intended to be a work of art, but also a functioning bus shelter. And the, the architecture is inspired by domestic architecture found in Puerto Rico. Next slide. Some more schematics of what the shelter would look like in plan and section view. Next. And then also some engineered drawings of how the shelter would be installed because it is cantilevered on top, that it would be weighted underground and then also installed below frost level. Just to inform the committee that this artist Edgar Soto has built a very similar shelter in Chicago. And so here you see a photo of it. And also I wanted to make sure the public is aware that this is both a work of art as well as a functioning shelter. And so we intend to have signage similar to what you see here that will help kind of demarcate the story of what this object is. The shelter will be made of cement. And it is this sort of rusted reddish color that the artist has selected. And then although the artist is in Chicago, we are working with artisans here in Cleveland. So we're working with Pompele Pecast Concrete and actually fabricating the components of the shelter. And then we have, will finalize two proposals from Nuvest Enterprises and F Buddy Contracting to install the shelter. Great. Can you take any questions?
Real quick, I did through the chair, forget to mention also that through the process of design review, one of the committee members mentioned that there are a couple of homes within the vicinity that share this motif for the Puerto Rican architecture, which we thought was really cool in relation to the sculpture installation.
That's great.
Madam Chair, to the applicant, just really quickly, what is the lighting in that area where the sculpture is going to be installed? I can't quite tell from the picture submitted.
So there, I do not have plans for specific lighting on the object. And I'm not certain if my folks from Metro Health can state anymore on the actual lighting on the site. Oh, thank you, Greg.
Good morning. My name is Greg Zuka. I'm the Executive Director of Community Transformation and Real Estate Development for the Metro Health System. To the question, yes, there's plenty of street lighting in that vicinity. Um, to the question, yes, there's, uh, plenty of street lighting, uh, in that vicinity. It is fairly well lit, um, but as Grace indicated, there isn't any additional lighting that we'll be putting in the, in place.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any further, Councilman, were you going to ask a question? I saw you come up.
Absolutely.
So, can you go back to the rendering for me, the, or the 3D, 3D rendering? And did you think there was going to be some signage, or you said there was, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Be a standalone sign.
Yeah, the one that was like, uh, in the grass kind of mounted, that one?
Yes.
How will that be? Where will that be? I, I sort of find this signage odd to me, to be honest. Um, like, where will it be in this, relative to the, to the, um, I mean, you have this incredible piece of art, and then this sort of ground-mounted signage. Um, go back and show me where that will be in plan. Where will that, where will it be? Where will that ground-mounted sign be?
Let's see. It will be placed very close to the shelter so that, you know, they are in conversation with each other. Um, if you can go back to one, two, keep going, please.
Like, where, where will it be relative to that?
It'll be right on, on or near that cement pad that is there.
Okay, it's fine. I'm not going to quibble, but it's sort of, everything else is really thoughtful, and then you just have this adjacent sign, but, um, uh, for, from where something, as opposed to having integrated some explanation or thought, but it's okay. Um, uh, Commission Members, do we have a motion?
I was going to say that that idea actually came from the Near West Design Review because they were very focused on this, um, shelter aspect more than the artistic aspect, and they wanted to make sure there was clear understanding for the community, um, to have this signage, uh, at the site.
I mean, I agree with telling the story and the signage, but I don't love it. It's how, uh, incongruous the, the sort of super thoughtful, and then, but it's fine.
Um, could I ask a question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Erin? I was just wondering, Lily, you know, how the, for the signage, um, would you, do you think it would be better to have it mounted to the, the actual art object?
No, no, not, no, I'm not, not that, but like, you know, um, I know your time is short, the artist, so people could hear the story, which is great. Um, I'm just pointing out that they, they, it seems a bit, um, you know, kind of beautiful, architectural, kind of sculptural, you've got to think, and then you have a ground-mounted sign that looks like the kind that you put up when you do a sewer district project, and I'm being honest, because those ones are everywhere, right? It, it, it wasn't thought through, so it now makes sense that the committee asked for it, and then it's getting added, right? Uh, how would I do it? I, I mean, I'd have to think about it, but it could have been, if you're redoing the pad, it could have been text on the ground, so when you're standing or sitting at the shelter, you can read the story, or, like, I don't know, I'm making it up, but it would have been more integrated, but it's fine. I, I think that it's better for people to know than not know. Um, so anyway, I don't want to slow things down. Um.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval for the sculpture, La Distancia.
Second. Motion and a second. Uh, by the way, it's a great project, so I didn't want to be a downer. I just love it. It's beautiful. I love the architecture. I love where it's, it's kind of where it's sitting. Um, so please don't take anything about it. I do love the project.
Thank you.
Okay. I call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Pre Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Uh, there's, can we get August? There's one more public art. It's called "The World Is Yours Basketball Court Mural." This is at East 82nd and Gil, Ameno Auto Park, Outer Park, Ameno Outer Park. Um, welcome. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? Just so you know, we've never really, um, what's that word, enforced that.
Uh, so we are here on a basketball court mural called "The World Is Yours." Um, we're part of-
Turn your, oh, my, I'm sorry.
Oh, so we're here from the Transform Arts Fund. We are one of the six winners, uh, of that project from last year. Uh, during our time, uh, when we were developing and going through exploratory phase, we really wanted to ensure that what we're doing isn't just for art, but it's for a transformative purpose. So, one of the projects we're doing is focusing on Black Maternal Health Week. Uh, it starts and kicks off April 11th. Um, with the crisis that's happening with, uh, black mothers in our city, we really wanted to pay homage and understand how we can support them and advocate for them. And this mural, um, will, in some ways, help push that agenda, and we've teamed up with the CAVs, uh, University Hospitals in Cleveland Clinic to also support this project. Um, Jordan, you want to jump in?
Uh, yeah, I think that the art that you will see is reflective of our mission to bring awareness to this cause. Um, additionally, we've done, uh, basketball court renovations throughout the city. We've done one at Lakeview Terrace, which you can see in that, um, slide right there, um, that was called Helping Hands. And often what we do is we work with the community directly to get feedback on what is important, right? To how do we provide equity within these spaces, these public spaces? Um, and similarly, we've done that with, um, our project. We've teamed up with Riddoff Farm, which is a neighboring, um, facility that occupies, um, quite a few acres and has a ton of football houses and green space in which they, um, have programming for the youth to teach them how to, you know, farm and, and produce, and they have additionally programming that runs throughout the spring, summer, and fall to invite people to that space. So, we feel like this, this project, um, one, bring awareness to Black maternal health, um, additionally bringing, um, a cohesiveness to that, that area to really ignite it and make it welcoming to the public and that, and that, um, Ken's been, Nate wrote.
Uh, next slide. Um, so here you could see the, the location. Um, it is kind of tucked away a little bit. It's not exactly on the street facing, but, um, there are some sidewalks there and, um, yeah, it's, uh, I think the next slide does say the sizing as well, but you can see it here on the, on the right, um, and that on the previous slide. Um, it, it's a half court, correct, Jordan?
No, it's a full court.
It's a full.
94 by 50.
Yeah. Want to get in on this?
Yeah, so, um, the court, currently, isn't in great condition, so we've, um, reached out to a company that does resurfacing. Um, so the court has some large cracks that run through it, and so we plan, uh, with the, you know, city approval and, and backing to proceed with resurfacing the blacktop, um, filling in those cracks and making it a, um, level space so then we can apply the mural. Um, once the mural is applied, there will be a guard shield that, um, gives it about a, a, a length warranty of five years. Um, we've been working with Sherwin-Williams to ensure that we have the proper, um, paint and materials to, you know, have this, uh, live as long as possible. Um, additionally, um, aside from the mural activation April 11th, um, we anticipate having, you know, three-on-three basketball tournaments, engaging with the youth continuously, learning with the Cavaliers to, you know, bring their mascots out there and really engage with the community. We've reached out to players as well. We haven't gotten any confirmations, but we are adventationally, um, pursuing, you know, influencers and, and athletes to come to this space and to, you know, just engage with the community. We feel that we build these stages, um, you know, to bring awareness and to invite the community, and we additionally want to invite those that are in position of influence to make it encouraging. Um, Glenn Infante is the lead artist on this project. Glenn Infante is, um, our business partner and as well an artist on our Transformative Art Fund. Um, Glenn Infante is a renowned artist who has done multiple murals throughout the city. Um, Lakeview Terrace is a great example, um, as well as, um, The Rock, which is another CMHA project. So, the, the two basketball renovations we have done in the past have been CMHA projects, so they typically handle this process. So, this is kind of our first project, um, actually presenting it in this capacity to get to football. Um, Chad Fedorich, Fedorich, Fedorovich is a helping hand that will, um, be an artist to help us execute this, along with Stina Lay, who will be customizing some basketball courts. She herself is a African-American woman who is a mother. So along this process, we are gaining testimonies of what this speaks to the person as well as the community. Um, I think that we can make reference to one of the projects we previously did, which was Taking Over City Hall and orchestrating artists running streets. Um, in that, we, we feel we did a great job of honoring the artists and their missions and really giving them a stage to present their art. Um, similarly, we plan on doing the same with this project, documenting the project from start to finish and gaining those testimonies to then share to the public, not only from a local standpoint, from a, from a national standpoint.
During our time with the Transform Arts Fund, one of the big pitches was that 80% of the funds will go towards small businesses and local artists. That's really important to us to ensure that the money's being put to good use locally. Um, and you can go to the next slide. Um, and here you could see the actual final art, uh, where you could see a mother holding up a son, and the world is in his hands. So, again, a really powerful transformative message. Just by seeing it, you know exactly what we're trying to do, and I think this is the type of piece that will stand the test of time. And then there's some renderings to the right.
Um, thank you. It is absolutely beautiful, and love the project and love the way you guys have done this. Question, or how, Lakeview's been up for a while, how's, and it's stunning too. How's that been, um, holding up? Like, what's it like? What do you, is it going to last beyond its, like, expenses?
It is, it is. Uh, that was 2018, and it is still-
Seven years later.
Yeah, and it's still doing great, and-
Need for maintenance yet?
There hasn't been no need for maintenance yet. I think additionally, um, you know, naturally you have knuckleheads out there that will deface or, you know, vandalize your property. Um, so we do ensure that, God forbid, that does happen to this property, that we will, you know, touch it up and make sure that we, um, ref- refurbish it. Um, however, we, we believe that by engaging with the community and gaining their perspective, you instill that level of equity, and so then they feel a sense of ownership and empowerment to protect it, treat it as their own.
Proximity and ownership for it all, transformative too.
Exactly.
This project's been pretty much a year in the making, so we, we've been working on this art since sometime last year. Um, the next slide actually just shows our testimonials and support from across the board. Everyone from, um, you know, Councilman Richard Starr, Justin Bibb, uh, Tim Lewis. So we really worked and shared this story and vision to everyone, and we've gotten, uh, a lot of support.
Additionally, just to the point of the Riddoff Farm, um, they do a, uh, community cleanup every year. And so we believe by, you know, having the basketball court fully refurbished, you know, there will be times in which that yearly cleanup and those activities can then kind of spill over to that space and allow the community to enjoy the public art.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, for approval of "The World Is Yours" basketball mural.
Second. Motion and a second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Pre Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Motion carries. Awesome project. Question, just to, I curious, are there advancements or innovations in the, um, hoops and the poles and themselves and what the materials are that, like, you know, they're using in public parks? Because-
I've seen some like-
They're just like all over the map, and then they've got someone like chains for nets, and, you know, like, is-
It's been on our mind to think about like picnic tables and just other things around this project, uh, which we're hoping the CAVs can contribute those resources. We don't have that in our budgeting, but it has been on our mind to figure out what else we can add around the, the court too.
Additionally, like bleachers, you know, if we're going to be hosting three-on-three tournaments or full-court basketball tournaments, where are these patrons going to be able to sit? Um, so we have explored those, but to Kamars' point, we need some additional funding. Um, we also have explored, um, shipping containers, right? Because in the wintertime, obviously this court won't be as utilized, but where do those bleachers leave, live? Where do the basketball courts live? Um, so we have explored, you know, what a storage space looks like. Um, but again, we do, you know, need additional funding for that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all. Thank you all.
Um, we have one mandatory referral. It is, um, cha- a chain of title for African Town Plaza. Um, someone from ED going to present this? Oh, you guys are, there you are. Come on up. This is, uh, authorizing the Director of Economic Development to inquire and reconvey certain parcels from the JSA ACC LLC. Um, and the city will designate certain improvements as public purpose. Um, this is at 7515 Cedar Avenue.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, so I'm here with, uh, Mr. James Sosin, the developer for the project. Um, this is, will be to get chain of title legislation, uh, next week. Um, and so first, I'll just kind of orient you, uh, on the site. Uh, slide, please. So this is 7515 Cedar Avenue. This is the northwest corner of East 77th and Cedar Avenue. Uh, this is a former YMCA building that's about 47,000 square feet, sitting on a three-quarter of an acre parcel. And, and so just to talk about the project, so, uh, JSA ACC LLC is the entity that holds the property, uh, set up by Mr. Sosin. Um, he plans to redevelop this building into a mix of uses. It's going to be, uh, 19 apartment units. It's going to be some commercial office space, uh, community gathering space, a commercial kitchen, and a multimedia room. Um, the really awesome part about this is that Mr. Sosin's kind of identified this cultural gap in Cleveland where there isn't really a great place to celebrate African heritage and call it that. So, uh, African Town Plaza will be the name of this development. Um, programming at the development will sort of be around that theme. Uh, and it will create five jobs and some modest payroll, uh, through management of the property. Uh, and so the point of the city entering the chain of title, which will functionally be, um, getting the property for about five minutes and giving it right back to Mr. Sosin, uh, is for TIF legislation. So, to help finance this project, it's going to be about a $9 million project. Uh, the city economic development department is looking at a, uh, 30-year, 100% non-school TIF. Uh, this is supported by the councilman and the local CDC. Uh, even with that incentive, uh, over its term, it, this project is going to generate about, uh, $2.7 million in new, uh, tax revenue and pilots to the city and the school district. Uh, and it's going to have a benefit to the project of about $2 million. Uh, so the staff recommendation would be to move this forward to legislation. And with that, I'll open it up to questions, and any comments Mr. Sosin would like to add?
Good morning, everybody. My name is James Sosin. I'm the developer for this project. I am very, very excited about this project. Uh, the building itself was built in 1942. It was built as a YMCA to serve black folks in Cleveland, done in segregation. And in the entire city of Cleveland, that was the only, uh, YMCA that black folks can go to in, in, in that period of time. Uh, this building was condemned, and I am very, very happy that I bought the building because it has a lot of Cleveland history. Uh, the leaders in Cleveland, the Stokes Brothers, for example, Carl Stokes and, uh, Louis, grew up in that building. Uh, Mayor Mike White grew up in that building. And back in the forest, this was the only building in Cleveland that had, uh, summer camp for black kids in Cleveland. So it has a lot of history, and, you know, what comes after condemnation is, uh, demolition. And we could have lost this building. And I'm glad that I caught it in time and I bought it. And this is what I specialized in. Um, I've saved about five buildings in Cleveland. Everything I've done in the last 20 years, uh, historic restoration of, you know, restoration of historic buildings. And most of my work is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So I'm very excited about this project. It's going to be about a $9 million project. We have, like, uh, uh, Mr. Bruno said, we have 19 apartments on second and third floor. We have offices in the basement and on the first floor. And we have an event center on the second floor. The event center will also double as a cultural center where we can have cultural activities. The event center will also double as a cultural center where we can have cultural activities. Uh, this, the county, uh, have espr- has expressed interest in this space in that building. So I'm, I'm excited about that as well. Um, it's gonna be a year of construction time. Uh, we're hoping to start at the beginning of next month. Uh, right now we're doing some demolition and, uh, asbestos removal. And the actual construction will start next month, first weekend of this month. Any other questions?
No, I, I know the buildings around, actually around the corner. How you doing, James?
I'm good, thanks.
Um, I, I know, um, this practice is in capable hands and, uh, we always, I'm always excited to see how it turns out when you're involved, so good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great project, uh, important.
Having said that, I will move to approve the, um, mandatory referral, um, chain of title at, for Afri- African Town Plaza.
A second. Motion and a second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Ray Scott?
Yes.
Harsh?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Can't wait. Just have it start. Thank you. Um, we have one special presentation for information only. Um, I really only have five minutes, so I have a question about whether we should hear it or whether it's quick or, uh, Matt, what you'd like to do?
Um, we can go through it pretty quickly, but you might not be able to stick around for the whole, or like, if there's anything left to comment.
Um, your call, if you would like to, um, wait to the next meeting or go. I'm gonna leave it to staff, but I, I will walk out here in five.
Yeah, the next meeting, I think, is one of the more, back in the, to, to.
Okay. Mission members, I'm gonna ask you what you would prefer. Is there a sense of urgency on this one?
Not exactly urgent, but how about, how about we go through it? I'm happy to send you the slides up.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, question.
Okay, okay. Uh, August is in charge.
Okey dokey.
All right. Thank you so much for having us for the short time we have left. Appreciate it. We'll go through the, these very quickly and then happy to stick around if you have any questions. I also want to introduce you to Maddie Newingham. She's been with the Planning Commission now for, uh, over a year or so. Um, also taking a lead on organizing the CDC's residents. You, you'll also hear from her a little later on. Uh, but just to give you a quick overview of what we're working on here, uh, let's see. Gotta turn it on first. Right. So, uh, at that planning commission, um, again, I'm formerly of the planning commission as a few weeks ago. I'm now working down in the mayor's office, uh, as a strategic, as a senior strategist. And, uh, for this project, this is something we've been working on at the tail end of our Thriving Communities grant. So this is a grant we received about two years ago from the US Department of Transportation. And as a part of that work plan, one thing we looked at and wanted to look at is, again, expanding this fifteen-minute city work. And I don't think we can do that unless we look at vacant land. And as a part of that gearing up for future citywide plan work, we wanted to figure out a way to ground that and empower residents to play a role in planning the future of that land with us. And so what we've been working on and are rolling out now is this sort of three-step approach. We take some data-driven land use analysis. This is done by, with city planning work. Uh, some of the data tools that we have available, looking at the transorientive development zone, the fifteen-minute city index, some resources from other colleagues within City Hall. And city planning staff make an assessment and prioritize land for various uses. Then we go through this, what's called this ground truthing process. We take that map, we have some technology tools that we train and equip residents with. And they basically, just like with the citywide property survey a few years ago, they walk their neighborhood streets, they look at city vacant, city-owned vacant parcels, and they see what we recommend and they provide their input. And then we review all that, reconcile any differences and share that back with the public and carry it forward into city planning processes. This isn't any new information for you all, but to give you a sense of, of what we share with residents as part of this training, is some of this background information. So the city of Cleveland, that's actually twenty-ten. Um, back in nineteen twenty or so, the city was very dense. These, uh, yellow census tracts represent areas of the city back in nineteen twenty that had thirty or more people an acre living in them. This is the era of streetcars. This is, uh, the era of, of the large apartment buildings in, in Hox, for example. This is what the city used to be. And in twenty-ten, this is essentially the same trend we find now in, in twenty-twenty. Uh, while the region population has grown and stabilized, the city has depopulated. And I, this graphic just represents it better than any that I've, I've used in terms of just putting it all on one slide. So what results from that, and this is, this is a, a snapshot of the map that we put together. These are all the city land bank parcels in the city of Cleveland. There's about eighteen thousand five hundred of them. And what this represents, overlaid on top of this is the transorientive development zone. Uh, most of those parcels are on the east side of the city. So what does this actual process look like? Again, that first pass, with the city provides its data-driven recommendations. Again, parcels near transit, for transorientive development, parcels further away from amenities and things. These are parcels that may be best suited in the short term for, uh, tree plantings or adding to our parks and recreation network, things like that. Uh, we take that to the community, they go out and ground truth as many parcels as they wish, ideally all of them. And then, uh, that third pass, we take it back, uh, review it, share it with council people, share it with other staff within the city of Cleveland. The goal here is to try to streamline this process for how we, uh, use, reuse these vacant lots, whether it's tree planting all the way up through development. Uh, just as a quick reminder why we're so focused on this transorientive development area, it's, it's over, it's almost half the city's population. And it's almost two, three-quarters of the city's non-white population. It's over, it's about forty percent of the city by land, over half the city, the city's own, the city's vacant lots are within this, with, are within a quarter mile of high-frequency transit. Uh, almost eighty percent of all workplaces are, are in this, this zone. And nearly a quarter of households in this, in this zone do not own a car. Seventy percent of households either have no car available or one car. That just means that there are, most of the households in this area, they're taking a non-car trip at some point to get somewhere. So how do we explain this to residents? This is a slide from our training deck. These are all the various things and, and ways in which this work is applicable to what we do at the city of Cleveland. Uh, at a high level, we just want help and want to empower residents to help shape how we decide what we want and where it goes. Uh, we want to create cl- clarity and alignment among partners, stretching back to the Cleveland lot effort. Uh, an ongoing theme with this whole process is we have all this vacant land, but it's difficult to not just get consensus of how that land should be used, but even just to understand if there is consensus, what it is. Uh, we, we also have this very sharp acute need for affordable housing and we need to better understand what our capacity is to even address it. Uh, we want to figure out what desired uses are before someone applies for a parcel. Generally speaking, the dynamic in, with the city land bank is we have all these parcels available, uh, but you have to ask if your use is going to be approved or not. And generally, there are quite a few steps along the process before that approval is given. Uh, we have far more parcels than we can reasonably maintain. Residents are acutely aware of this and provide this feedback constantly when we engage with them on this matter. Uh, and we have partners that are eager to use this land, for example, tree planting. I keep harping back to this because, uh, this is an important initiative for the entire city of Cleveland is to preserve and, and grow our tree canopy. Trees have a lot of positive benefits and we have a lot of land in which we could plant trees on. So what does this process actually look like? Again, this flow chart tells you how we're actually implementing this. Uh, in the first few months or so, we, again, we do those data-driven recommendations. We have that map of, of where we, what we think parcels in the short, medium, and long term should be used for. Uh, we take that to residents. We do a concept training. Residents have constantly asked, and you'll, you'll hear more from Maddie on this, but residents, uh, have constantly asked us for more background information in terms of what motivates us to come up with the plans that we, that we come up with. And then we do the technical training. That's the actual how-to, how you use the technology that we've built to provide this feedback to us. Uh, we're just about wrapping that up now. Where we are in this process is essentially between that last yellow box and that first green box. We just started, uh, the actual ground truthing process in Mount Pleasant and we're rolling that out in a few other neighborhoods as we speak. Uh, that'll occur between now and the end of April. And then our goal is to debrief those recommendations, figure out where more conversations might be necessary with the community, and then hopefully keep moving this forward. Our funding with Thriving Communities pretty much ends at the end of April. Uh, the program itself is over in June. Uh, so we're working on, that's, it's not enough to do the entire city, so we're working on, pursuing other funding options to keep this work going through the summer, which is the best time to ground truth, because that's when the weather's most comfortable and it also, you can, you can get more information in terms of the condition of, of the parcels. So again, what are we asking actually residents to do? So the layout of this process is we, we do our best to pair residents up in, in teams of at least two. That way there's some deliberation and discussion as they go along the ground truthing process. Uh, this is, uh, we conducted a pilot, by the way, in Slavic Village last summer. Maddie can share more information with you on how that went. Uh, but a lot of what we're rolling out now is based on that experience in Slavic Village last summer. And so it's really simple. What residents do is they walk up to a parcel. Uh, they decide immediately if there's something they want to flag for three-on-one, is there dumping going on? Is there something really serious that needs to be reported right away? Otherwise, they, they look at what we propose, we provide them with some background information as to what, uh, the condition of the parcel may be from a data perspective. And then, uh, they agree or disagree, they tell us why, we ask them to take a photo and write down any notes they may have about the parcel. And, uh, then they, then they're done. And if the process itself takes, on average, in Slavic Village, it took about thirteen minutes a parcel. Usually it's, it's much quicker than that. Sometimes it can be longer depending upon the location and the questions and comments residents may have. So this is just a screenshot of, of the, the actual mobile application. This is what it looks like. I won't spend too much time on this, but I just wanted to include this in here so you got a sense of, this is what residents are seeing as, on their phones or on their mobile devices as they go through this process with us. And much of the technical training involves just, uh, getting residents comfortable and familiar with what this actually is and how it works. Here's a before and after of the proposed, of what we proposed in Slavic Village and the actual ground truth results. Uh, I won't linger, you, you might need to study this a little bit to actually see the differences, but, uh, you'll notice, uh, some of the colors change, especially at the bottom of the map. There are some of those pink parcels which, uh, we identified in part as there being, uh, potential for nature-based solutions. Again, that's tree planting, that's gardening, things like that. Uh, residents, ground truth, some of those actually prefer, uh, single-family homes, for example. And so some of that swapped. You'll see some more green, uh, for example, just south of Fleet Avenue where you see those or, orange boxes. There's a set of green that isn't present on the map on the left. That's where residents said, this is actually a better site to do tree planting or create a pocket park than to build homes on. So, uh, in general, that's how this process worked last summer. And here's just a breakdown of all the categories and the number of parcels that we recommended for specific uses, uh, what the number of parcels that residents affirmed, in other words, they agreed with us, the number of parcels where they disagreed, and then just the general agreement rate. It's kind of all over the place, but essentially, uh, three-quarters of the time, residents in Slavic Village at least agreed with what we recommended, which I think is pretty good. That's a, that's, that only leaves a few, and, and for the most part, you know, aside a few handfuls, we, uh, we, we pretty much agreed with or affirmed whatever, whatever residents, uh, preferred. Because to be honest with you, there's a lot of land to go around for all the uses maybe we want. We're just trying to build consensus and alignment of where that should go. So here's some lessons we learned from the pilot. Like I said earlier, lesson, uh, residents really wanted more planning background, which was great. Happy to talk to them about the work we do and, and why we're doing it. Um, we found that organized outings can be more effective, especially just to, like, saying, we're going out for the, this two hours at this time. That seemed to be more effective in terms of getting the work done. And then, uh, continued engagement beyond exercise is important. Residents really want to know what we're doing with this information. And, uh, we hope and expect that this will inform the citywide plan, obviously, but zoning map updates, uh, where we do tree plantings, things like that. Um, I want to pass over to Maddie to share more about what the actual experience was like with the residents.
Yeah. Thanks. Um, so I'm, I've been working with more residents than I can count at this point, mostly on the east side. Um, it's my favorite part of my job, so I hope that, you know, provides some emphasis, cause I, I do a lot of, um, strategic planning work and this is my favorite because the residents, um, they really love having, um, the ability to give their input on the front end. And so we spend a lot of time talking about, um, like, why that's important to them and just how that differs from other projects. And what they like is that they're actually building what's going to be in their neighborhoods where they live. Like when we pass people who are driving, they say hi, they know their neighbors. And so like the word's gotten out and, and people are really like engaging with this in just such a personal way. Um, and we've also gotten to build really great relationships with residents who we've probably not gotten to plug in with before. And part of that is because we're able to, um, through the Thriving Communities Grant, we're able to pay them for their work. Um, and that just makes it so much more accessible and people are able to bring their kids. Um, we had someone bring their, their, uh, young, like, four-year-old daughter and, um, so the resident experience has just been, you know, very accessible, very interested. And, um, you know, we've just been trying to get out there on the ground and really like the, the bulk of the work is, um, just walking the streets, answering a couple of questions and really just talking about, um, not just the parcel, but what people want to see and how they're gonna make it happen. Um, and they're already thinking about the next steps. So, okay, we've planned these things, like, how, what are we, how are we gonna put the, the thing on it? How are we gonna, you know, operationalize this? And, um, so, you know, the, just the first comment I have is really just the, the engagement has been really eye-opening. Um, I also think this process has created, um, Matt mentioned how difficult it can be to get land from the land bank. Um, and so being able to navigate the barriers we have and, or I guess reduce some of the barriers in a, in a complicated system to at least try to make it easier, try to make things work for people in the systems that we have. Um, so, you know, creating the alignment with the CDC's, the city, the council members, um, and these personal relationships. I, I think it's just gone a, a really long way and, um, you know, connecting the dots. Um, yeah, I think that's kind of the comments that I have.
Thanks, Maddie. So just to wrap up, we'll give you a sense of what our next steps are. We're, we are currently, uh, recruiting, uh, more CDC's and residents. We're pretty much at the tail end of that through this month, honestly. Uh, we're working with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy as our fiscal agent, so they're the ones that are actually being the pass-through for the money from the US government. Uh, it goes to our capacity builder, which is WSP. They're contracting with the land conservancy, land, land conservancy contracts with the CDC's, CDC's pay the residents. Uh, right now, New Point is our, is our sort of lead CDC, they're the one that's the farthest along in this process. We've had about three trainings with roughly twenty residents. Uh, we already kicked off the ground truthing last weekend, so Maddie's been going out and, and we went out as a big group last weekend to, to get the residents rolling, so that's in process now. Uh, did a training earlier this week with, uh, some residents with the support of Midtown and Neighborhood Connections. Uh, we've got their training with St. Clair Superior this weekend, so this is very active, uh, and ongoing. Um, just to give you a sense of, you know, we've been taking some fun photos of, of, of residents. Uh, you know, these are, these are the people that are, that are doing the work with us. We are also billing out some tools that we can share at a future date, just a dashboard to track all the parcels. This will actually update live as parcels are ground-truced. It's, it's mostly empty now, but you see that R at the bottom, that little half circle that'll fill up, hopefully as more and more parcels are ground-truced. Uh, there's a, a lot to do and, and we don't have all the resources yet to do it. Uh, but our goal is to prioritize the TOD zone first and then go out there, outwards from there. Uh, it's hard to see too, but if you see on the map now, if you, this map you'll be able to interact with and zoom in. Uh, but the parcels that are, you see that are sort of bright green, especially in Slavic Village, those are the parcels that were done this summer. Uh, when a parcel is ground-truced, it, it has a, a bright green outline, so that'll show you that it's, that it's done. Let's see. I did have one, I had one last photo to end on here. Oh yeah, here it is. Uh, and yeah, this is just from last weekend. Whoops. Uh, just showing the residents out there and, and us out there ground-truing, so we had some great spring weather and, yeah, we're off and rolling. So yeah, that's all.
Any comments, questions, guys?
Uh, just really quickly, one, I just wanna appreciate and uplift the compensation element, um, and that, and the accessibility to, uh, allow folks to actually be able to participate in a thoughtful way. Um, over time, I guess I'm curious, are you envisioning that residents will intertwine among neighborhoods? Cause I think like a train-to-trainer also could be really interesting as you, you know, and understand the value, obviously, of the proximity to their specific neighborhood. But there's gonna be inevitably things that are gonna transcend across the city. And, you know, sort of looking at the residents almost like a cohort, um, learning from one another and like building their capacity over time. Spinning that out there.
Yeah, that's a great idea and, and we've already had some initial, cause residents have asked us, especially in, in, with the New Point folks in Mount Pleasant. Uh, they wanted to know, are we just doing our neighborhood or can we go elsewhere in the city? And, and again, like, we really want to at least initially try to recruit residents from the neighborhood, but absolutely want to do some cross-pollination there to, to have, so when residents, especially because, uh, they're already trained. So, and, and there's, you know, these, we have, and one thing we learned from the, from the New Point training for sure is that, uh, you know, you're not just obviously restricted to your neighborhood. People exist and live and work all over the city, so, um, we're trying to, again, recruit people mainly from where they live. But, uh, our goal is to, again, if we can continue to fund this, to, uh, to, yeah, to do exactly what you said. And I, I really liked the suggestion of train the trainer. That's a great idea.
You know, what I, what I really like is the fact that you're using simple speak. Ground truthing. I mean, everybody, you don't have to explain that, right? I mean, people get it. I think a lot of times we used to refer to it as, uh, Archibable. I mean, people get it. I think a lot of times we used to refer to it as a archibabble. And, you know, I'm an architect. And we tend to talk above people because it sounds cool. But I, I think the fact that you're making this real and authentic and engaging the community and it's simple. It's not like, sometimes when you see a master plan, what the hell does that mean? But if I know that I had some part in getting to that part, that's, that's awesome. Because I think at that point, people think it's done. And it's, you don't need their input at that point. So I think this is awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, are we fatigued? Thanks, guys.
Thanks for wanting to share this with you, and we'll, we'll be back hopefully soon with more updates.
Thanks. All right, director?
So the only two things that I have is, oh, I'm sorry.
Oops.
All right, yeah, so I have two things. Well, actually, one thing is updates on our staffing. We have two positions that are open right now, that will be posted probably next week. I would assume it's going through the approvals right now. But it is a city planner for the zoning section. So we have, zoning will be fully staffed once this position is filled. And then the other is an administrative advisor. And so those two positions, we will, we will be filling. And that will have us almost completely staffed, with the exception of our city planning commission member. And so we're going through the applications now, getting ready to do interviews for that, for the additional commission member. And we're also going to be trying to post for an alternate. So that way we don't have the quorum issues.
Yeah. All right. Well, thanks, director.
All right.
I guess we're officially adjourned.